Madam Mayor.
Ms. Laura Roberts.
Madam Mayor, Caleb. Thank you. Caleb, could you kind of give me a little more definition of the difference in the yards? What's a storage yard versus a contractor's yard?
Yeah, I can look those up and read them to you. So, we don't have a... A storage yard is usually an ancillary use to a larger land use. A contractor's yard would be one of the potential land uses we have in our Schedule of Use Control. So, this use fits that definition the best. One could make an argument maybe for another use, but there isn't really one that fits it any better than that within the city. A majority of the site, I didn't calculate it, but a majority of the site is used for outdoor storage. There's a 13,000, I believe it's 13,000 square foot building, proposed on a six acre site. So, that's one of the issues is that floor area ratio. Again, when you have an outdoor storage yard, it's going to be tough to meet the floor area ratio envisioned here. But a yard, a storage yard, a contractor's yard... A storage yard is essentially part of a contractor's yard. But you can also have a storage yard when you're not a contractor's yard. So, you could be another type of a use and just have an outdoor storage area, and we wouldn't deem you a contractor's yard, if that makes sense. So, but in both cases, it's an industrial type of use. We really, you know, the zoning, the underlying zoning is really the tough thing. If this, if we could allow industrial out there, this use really wouldn't be a problem. But we are looking for more office-type uses and jobs per ratio than storage yards or contractor's yards.
Thank you.
Anything further at this point? Would the applicant's representative like to make comment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Becky McKay, Engineering Solutions, 1029 North Rosario Business Address. I'm representing Jared Bell with Butte Fence on this application. I did read staff's analysis, and I totally disagree with their classification of this particular use. I've been out to the Butte Fence facility on Wilson Drive. They've been there for 17 years. They have a showroom, their office, and a manufacturing building. They operate fabrication facility where they work on vinyl, where it comes in in pallets, and then they send it through different routers. Jared indicates with their wrought iron products, they build gates, they build gazebos made out of vinyl, that there's all kinds of customized products that they build out of that facility. And their current site right now is 1.87 acres, and they've just outgrown it. And we did evaluate their current site to see, okay, what is their storage area? And that is material storage. A contractor's yard is construction equipment, a lot of, you know... I don't see theirs as being a contractor's yard more as a fabrication manufacturing facility with a storage yard and an office and a showroom. Right now, on their current 1.87 acre site, 40,000 square feet of that site is enclosed yard. Now, when Jared bought the 5.9, or this 5.97 acres, I've worked two years with him trying to find a location. I did the same thing with H.D. Fowler, and I worked with Coop Collision, two longtime Meridian businesses that wanted to stay in Meridian, and both, they've all had difficulty trying to find a larger site to expand their business and hire more employees and meet the demand that's out there. And so Jared indicated to me that this 5.97 acres is larger than what they anticipated. And we did meet with Ada County Highway District. We fully understand that there's going to be a future commercial collector that's going to be on the south end of the property at some point in time. They're not going to be using this whole site. They're only going to be using the north portion of it. And what he envisioned is at some point in time, when that commercial collector roadway happens, then there'd be another use on the south side of this property. And so I think staff was basically under the assumption that this entire thing just has 14,000 square foot building, and then everything is storage yard. No, that's just not the case. And like I said, he sees that as ability to have possibly two users in the long term. We also went through the 10-mile area-specific plan. And the 10-mile area-specific plan clearly states that IL is an allowable use, allowable zone. All through the 10-mile specific area plan, it talks about... It talks about a mixture of manufacturing uses, office uses, employment. Light industrial is a key component. And along your Franklin Road corridor, we have always had light industrial uses. And those light industrial uses will continue on as we head further west toward the Canyon County border. So, I think, you know, this is not a heavy industrial use. We're not putting something out here that I think is going to be detrimental to the city in the long term or negatively impact the future of that 10-mile area-specific plan. If you looked in staff's analysis, they said as far as the building design, the materials, the quality of the building, it meets the design standards outlined in the 10-mile plan. Right now, where Butte Fence is located off Wilson Drive, they're IL. And that's the same type of zoning, except with the county, we would be asking for. And on each side of their current facility, they have residential. There's R-40, fourplexes on one side, and R-15 multifamily proposed on the other side of their property and on the south side of their property. So, they obviously coexist with residential. What we have out there now, as far as residential, is those are old rural five acre, 10 acre parcels that have been chopped up over the years under the county's one-time split. This is a good use. They want to upgrade their facility. They want to stay in Meridian. And as Jared told me, he says, "This is our last ditch effort. We've gone from parcel to parcel." This was the only one that had size, and they could get the appropriate access, because the other parcels that were smaller in size, ACHD, was going to restrict their access. And this one gives them the access they need. So, you have sewer and water right in front of it. We're only a quarter mile away from the city limits. And I ask that you support this waiver, because I think all of us want to see businesses stay in Meridian. And I think it's going to be a good use along that Franklin corridor. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Burton.
No question.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Do you know the number of employees that Butte Fence has currently?
Yes, he currently, Madam Mayor, Councilman Mylum, he has, he said, just slightly over 40 employees right now.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
So, to confirm, you're just wanting, he's not asking or wanting to be annexed into... That parcel be annexed into the city of Meridian, correct? Just to confirm.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Burton, that is correct. We are not contiguous to the city limits. Otherwise, I would be asking for annexation into the city.
So, since I'm the new guy on the block, what, Madam Mayor, follow-up? So, Mr. Neri, what was the precedent with connection to city services without being annexed into the city?
So, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Burton. So, if it was annexable, then it would be a completely different conversation. But since it's not, our city code contemplates when they're not able to annex, but they are able to attach to services. The request normally simply goes directly to Public Works. What we ask for in this particular circumstance, and we have probably three or four of these a year, that, and I think part of the discussion for the future will be changing our UDC to include this type of application to go to planning for planning to comment because of, again, the longer-term impacts. The serviceability is simply one issue, but the longer-term impacts on the planning side is really what the council needed the information on, and that's what they've provided. So, we have normally done contractual agreements with the property owners so that once they are contiguous, they will annex into the city as part of their agreement to acquire the services now. And I think what planning is telling you in their memo is that there are things about this particular application that may be inconsistent with some of your other 10-mile area-specific plans that you anticipated. But they just want you to be aware of that. If the decision is to allow them to connect to services, some of those opportunities may be lost by having this type of user come into the city at this particular point in time.
Any other questions at this time?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
So, if we were to deny the request, they can still move there, right? They just won't have city services. Would, what would be their, would they put a well in septic? Is that already there?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Mylum, obviously, when we have central water in front of the property, you want to have appropriate fire protection with a hydrant. I've had some projects where they're commercial in nature, and we've had septic systems. But normally, we do have central water to meet the fire requirements. It just doesn't seem that practical to try to put a well down when you have services available. My client's done everything that the city's asked him to provide. He's provided a site plan. He's provided elevations. He's provided a landscape plan. We're going above and beyond what the county would require as far as landscape buffering. We're showing dedication of future right-of-way. We're planning for the 35-foot entryway corridor landscaping along Franklin, because we don't want to be non-compliant when we do come into the city. Jared's indicated if, you know, if he's unsuccessful with this, he'll have to go, he'll say, "I have to go to Nampa." He said, "I've shook every tree here as far as trying to find a site that fits our needs and is in close proximity to the interstate." Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. Borton.
Madam Mayor. Becky, if this were to have been contiguous, this would come with an annexation application and also a request to modify the future land use map in the 10-mile specific area plan? That would all be part of the analysis?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Borton, no, I don't see that. Sherry and I both looked at the 10-mile specific area plan, and the definitions and where it talks about the mixed employment. It says, "Mixed employment, encourage a diversity of compatible uses, mixture of office, research, specialized employment, light industrial, including manufacturing and assembly, and other miscellaneous uses." So, no, in my professional opinion, it would not require a comprehensive plan map amendment. No. The IL, if you look on your, in your sheet, it shows IL is an acceptable zoning designation under the mixed employment. In fact, the staff quotes themselves saying, "The other zones correlate best." But if you look on your 10-mile specific area plan, under mixed employment, there is no best choice, possible choice, or marginal choice. It shows permitted uses, conditional, and accessory. Office is accessory in the IL there, and then it shows light industrial as the first listing under mixed employment. So, in my opinion, this fits in perfectly. I do not understand, if this were indeed a contractor's yard, one may categorize it as heavy industrial, but it is not a contractor's yard. It's manufacturing, fabrication, office, showroom. The council in 2017 approved an automobile repair facility to the north of this site. And staff indicated there, they were comfortable. I quote, "Caleb, I'm comfortable." From a standpoint, I worked with legal, and I'm comfortable that the applicants are in agreement with the provisions, were in agreement with the provisions.
And was that in the 10-mile areas plan?
Yes, ma'am.
So, Madam Mayor, if I can, that had a different land use designation, and it was a different requested use with a sunset clause as well. Maybe just to clarify, there is no reason that I have to believe. What you have is what's been submitted to the city for evaluation. The stuff that Ms. McKay started out with, saying, "Hey, in the future, when this collector roadway comes in, we're willing to redevelop it." None of that's in the narrative or on the site plan. There's nothing to that effect in this request to say, "We can take these steps so we can potentially be closer with the envisioned plan for this area." That's the first time I'm hearing this information about redevelopment of a storage yard or any of that type of information. I don't know, that changes, you know, the analysis 100%, but it certainly plays in. Again, the floor area ratio here, we're talking about 0.05% of the site being covered with the building when we're looking for, you know, significantly more than that. And again, so if we have another building or another user that can redevelop out there, I think we're making strides to being more consistent, but when it's largely a storage yard. But again, that's apples and oranges to me. That was a different use for an auto body repair shop that has a sunset clause or redevelopment clause within that agreement for water and sewer hookup. That's why staff was comfortable with it. This is a significant investment. I don't see it redeveloping anytime soon. So, just, it's different.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Becky, so since we aren't looking at this as an annexation with a development agreement and... Is there any kind of assurance that you could give to what you said previously regarding the south side of the property developing into office space, et cetera?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Mylum, that was a conversation that Jared and I had after we met with Ada County Highway District, and they talked about that future commercial collector. And he told me that even though the parcel was larger than what they have, that what their needs are, he said, "I still believe that it will work for us, and then the southern portion could have another use that then fronted on that baggage road." And if their site enlarges, I mean, maybe they end up building another structure back there when that road goes. I mean, all I have to give you now is the site plan, which his architect prepared for his current needs. But I can guarantee you, you know, they're going from 1.87 acres to almost six acres. So, that's a big jump. And I think, you know, Jared wants to do this right. He wants to make sure that this, you know, is a nice facility. I guess I don't, I don't know what the future holds, when that road will happen. So, I don't know how to put any timeline on it. There's a lot of different parcels there that would all have to kind of coordinate and cooperate together to make that happen. It's not like it's one large parcel back there that all of a sudden, a big commercial developer would come in with a master plan. It would take an assemblage of parcels.
Madam Mayor, if I can, on that point a little bit, I mean, this, Becky's right. I mean, it's going to be difficult to develop that road from this parcel out. That is a little bit of the rub. I mean, we are, city generally tries to grow from the inside out. Here, we're leapfrogging over and allowing county development. This kind of goes to what Mr. Neri pointed out. We need to really evaluate, and it's not necessarily the UDC. This request is coming through the sewer and water sections of city code, not in the UDC. So, that's really what needs to be looked at. And is that provision there so somebody can develop in the county with city services? Or is it really meant to say, "Hey, you know, your sewer and septic, your septic system fails, and we've got a sewer line out there. We're willing to allow you to hook up an existing structure." Mike, I wasn't around when that code was written, but I struggle to believe that it was written for this case where it's, "Hey, have city services, but do it in the county." I just don't envision that that's why this code was adopted back in the day. Back to the road, though, I mean, that's really how the road should come in from Black Cat and then continue, and each parcel develops, dedicates the right-of-way, and develops their piece of that road until it eventually gets over to the mid-mile collector that runs north-south. So, we lose that opportunity with portion of this site, you know, building their section of that roadway or half of the section of that roadway. If, in fact, they don't redevelop it to offices, been talked about, but we don't have anything that would require that. You just sit there in the county forever, essentially, or annex even. But I don't know what provisions we could have to build a road at that point. So, it was just, that road becomes more difficult when you don't grow from Black Cat back to the west.
Well, Madam Mayor, I think, I guess I'd like to address that. I mean, I think the council could make it a condition, you know, we've been provided an agreement from your legal department, make a condition that they, that they provide for that future right-of-way on the south end, their half of that. So, that, and then inset their landscaping and go with a collector width on the landscaping. I mean, I think it's doable so that it can fit in. You know, once your city limits start getting out into this area, I mean, I think this is a temporary situation. You know, eventually, you guys are going to be annexing out in these areas. So, you know, it's just...
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Becky, I think I understand exactly why you're asking for what you are, and it's, you're in a tough spot. I think you've done a good job trying to frame this in a way that works or could work. I think it's really difficult to do. Obviously, this discussion sort of highlights that. But for me, I think the balance of considerations still weigh on not approving this request. I think staff's analysis is sound, and what Mr. Hood's described makes sense. I mean, we hate to have anybody need to relocate. That happens at times. But the full vetting of what would occur with an annexation when the time is right, coupled with the DA that outlines all these terms and conditions that make other projects, long-term, successful, if they're not here. So, I'm not inclined to try and create a short-term solution that might be problematic long-term. So, I'm not supportive of the application. I understand what you're doing, and I think you've done a great job trying to make this work. I just don't think it does, in light of what would be the more appropriate way for this to be processed.
Councilman DeWeard, Councilwoman Borton, if we were to basically get with our client, my client's stuck in Salt Lake right now. He had mechanical problems on his flight, so that's why he's not here. He wanted to be. If I were to get with my client and come up with some provisions that he's comfortable with for inclusion in that agreement, that would basically, I guess, satisfy some of the concerns that staff has with the future right-of-way as far as another building on the southern end. Would council entertain deferring this? I guess I'd like to consult with my client. He want, like I said, he wanted to be here to express, you know, his comments, and was not possible.
Sure. Madam Mayor, for me, to be blunt, I don't think that would get there. I think that, even with good intent, it kind of bypasses a lot of the process that... It might seem cumbersome. I think it is right to vet it through that with the full staff analysis. It'd be through P&amp;Z and the public hearing process. You know, we're making long-term decisions, and those are right to do it that way when it's an annexation. I still think that's right to do it for something like this. So, I wouldn't be in favor of, even with good intent, trying to shoehorn this towards a solution short-term.
Any other comments or questions?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Couldn't we create a DA-type document? Maybe that's not legal, I don't know. So, maybe this is a bill question. But that would, you know, with the timeline for annexation as far as the first time, it's within a certain period of time that they're contiguous. I mean, they're willing to follow city code and setbacks, and it sounds like they're trying really hard. And we claim that we're business-friendly, and I understand that this is a long-term down the road. But it just seems like somewhere, we can figure out a way to include the things that would be included in a DA that we feel comfortable with as far as how many buildings and the use of the other parts of the land, since they won't be using the whole six acres for this business. It just seems to me like we could do something like that. But would it hold? Yes, that's a question.
Mr. Neri.
Sure. Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Mylum, I mean, certainly in our hookup agreement, you know, we have put conditions similar to what we're talking about. And I think Caleb alluded to the one with the garage mechanic repair facility on the north side of Franklin and that area. We tried to capture a lot of those things, but one of the things that made that doable was that that use was going to go away in the future, because it wasn't consistent with the 10-mile plan. That wouldn't be the case in this particular instance. So, whether that, we could get there, I don't know. I mean, I'm always hopeful we could get enough conditions. So, it's really up to the council. I mean, we could certainly try. I don't know that we're worse off if we try, so...
Madam Mayor, as a follow-up, I just, I feel that with the addition of other office-based mixed-use property, that it would qualify for the use of the 10-mile plan. So, based on what Becky's read us and based on the testimony to add additional buildings, it kind of changes the report, like Caleb said, because they didn't have that information prior. So, I would say maybe a continuance on this would be better, so she can get with her client, get more information specifically on what, what exactly they would be willing to commit to, and then make a decision based on that. That's how we're stood.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Caleb.
If I can, I don't know where you guys might go with this, but I'll just point out, and this is, again, for a future workshop largely, but right now, the request is for sewer and water hookup. They can write a letter to the city engineer at any time. I don't know how long it's going to take to come up with Plan B or whatever additional provisions are. But there's no charge. Anyone can write the letter, this, submit a revised plan. I guess I just wonder if, in fact, it's, if you're not agreeable to what's been proposed today and is denied, there's nothing like in the UDC that says you have to wait a year or anything like that. They could turn around tomorrow and submit another letter to the city engineer. "Hey, here's a new plan," I guess is my point. So, if we don't know, rather than you guessing, "Hey, is a month enough time? Is six weeks, two weeks, a week?" You could potentially, if you're leaning that way, deny this subject site plan and request. And they can resubmit and warrant, you know, and can bring this back to you at any time. So, I just wanted to point that out. The process is, that's one of the things we have with the process, we need to kind of clean up a little bit. That's the current process.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I'd be interested in the applicant's feedback on that.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Mylum, we submitted months and months and months ago the request, and it had to work its way through the Public Works process. And we had to call and kind of find out what's going on. So, I guess my client's kind of running out of time. You know, he's got a window. I'd rather stay in the process than be kicked out of the process and come back through the front door and run the gauntlet again to get to the council. Defers for a month, and we'll be back. I mean, we met our timeline this time to provide additional information to staff and a landscape plan. And like I said, if my client hadn't been caught at the airport with mechanical issues on his plane, he'd be here to probably give you more definitive answers. But I guess, you know, toward the middle or end of January would be perfectly fine. And we will come back with substantive information and provisions.
Council, any other questions for Becky?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, just, I think this is the last thing that I have. And that's fine. I mean, a month, we can do it. I guess that, just again, from staff's perspective, it takes us some time to analyze it. You know, I know the memo isn't, it didn't take me days and days to do it, right? But it's still time, right? And there's other things going on. So, just a little consideration that way as well. Again, this request, and we take it seriously, and we weren't trying to delay anything. August 30th, the letter was submitted, dated anyways, to the city. November 7th, the request for hookup was presented. It was continued from a couple of weeks ago, and here we are today. So, I don't feel like we've been dragging things out necessarily. And I can commit to reviewing things, whether it's continued or resubmitted. commit to reviewing things, whether it's continued or resubmitted. But around the holidays, a month, when we've got other things, and this isn't, it's not in the queue, I mean, it's here, but anyways, I'll, I'll stop. But that's, this all goes to the point of this process is flawed. Anyway, so...
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burton.
Always enjoy Becky's presentations. Becky, you always do a fantastic job, very well prepared, and I, I feel like, you know, when it comes to small business in, in our city, you know, I'm a small businessman as well, and it's really hard for me to wrap my arms around kicking a person out. I don't think that's what we're doing, but like, making it more difficult for someone to do business in our city. But sometimes, you know, I, I guess my thoughts are in line with council member, Burton. I would never say, Becky, you know, this is it, draw a line in the sand, you know. If you want to come back in a month, that's fine. I, I just feel like, I, I just don't know what you could do to this plan in order to eliminate that leapfrog process to, or, or come up with something that would be, you know, it says here, that would be more in line with the mixed-use portion. I mean, I'm, I'm looking at the memo, or not, it was, but at future land use and zoning, it says the subject property is designated mixed employment ME, and it, and it goes on to say different, different types of land uses, and one of the land uses that it mentions is not yours that you're, you're talking about. And so, I'm struggling with this one, but I think that I, I, my, my thoughts and, and opinions probably fall in line with Mr. Burton's. But I'm not saying denial, or if you wish to come back in a month, that's your prerogative, but I don't know if my opinion's going to change, just to give you heads up.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burton.
Just one other comment, and maybe we'll get a motion here soon. The, the other wrinkle that, from a policy consideration is, if you've got an, an ultimate design and build-out, this will never be annexed. This is, this is county property, it's not asking to come within the city, and there may never be a need in the future to ever annex. There's not a change of use, there's not a grandfathered term, and, so...
So...
Madam Mayor?
Oh, sorry.
I, I was just going to respond to that. We do, in the draft, so legal did put together a hookup agreement. Don't quote me on this, but I think within 60 days of the property being contiguous, we will put them on notice that you have to annex. Now, to your point, they may not want to or need to, but we will put them on noticing, now is the time, welcome to the city of Meridian. Difficulty with that is then we got to assign them a zoning code, you know, we're going to zone them IL, and you may have adjacent properties that are CG or other things, so the non-conformities. But I just want to clarify that, that in, if sewer and water is provided to them, we've got a provision in the draft agreement that says, we'll let you know when you come, so we aren't creating an enclave into the future. We've at least got that provision.
Okay, good. Thanks, Caleb.
That's what I was going to say. Madam Mayor?
Ms. Milam.
Oh, I move that we continue this to the January 8th workshop.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer.
Just for the record, I'm here, and I was watching the stream, not from the beginning of the meeting, but from the beginning of this item.
All those in favor of continuing this, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, the ayes have it. Item 6B is a request for reconsideration on H. 2018-0075. Mr. Neri, or...
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. You have a request from the Boise Hunter Homes Council to reconsider your decision on the OY High School decision and findings that were done a few weeks ago. At this juncture, basically, there is no additional testimony that's taken. You have a written request for reconsideration, you have a response from the school district's council, you also have a, all of that in your record to consider. If you have a clarifying question you need answered for information to make a decision, you certainly can ask that, but it wasn't for testimony today. The ruling decision point today is either to grant the request for reconsideration, to either change or change or modify the findings as have been previously approved, or to set it for a new public hearing in front of you, or to deny the request, because you, the request is basically that they would like you to consider a new decision, and I don't want to try to characterize it for them, so just what's in the record. So, it's really up to you on what option you wish to do. So, either to grant the request, and either modify the findings, grant the request, and set it for a new hearing, or deny the request.
Council, any questions on the decision in front of you?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burton.
I'll make, I'll make a motion, and we can discuss it. I didn't, I didn't see any specific deficiencies outlined in the request for reconsideration that warranted doing so, other than just perhaps trying to take a second look or a second bite at the apple, which I don't think is what the specific deficiencies provision is intended to do. So, I'd move that the request for reconsideration be denied on H. 2018-0075.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to deny the request for reconsideration. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer.
I think our reconsideration code is confusing and odd and nearly pointless. I understand there is a point for it, but it's, it's, it's not an appeal, which a lot of, I guess it almost appears to be. I, I do think that this is a mess, you're kind of being screwed, but I think that Councilman Burton's motion is, should be approved, because the, the points that he made, there, there wasn't a deficiency, the council made the decision that it was allowed to make, with, and we had all the information that we needed to make it, and we're very aware that what we were doing was to your detriment. But it was the decision that was made, and we didn't, it wasn't from a lack of information.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burton.
I, when, when we voted on this motion originally, I was one that would have voted against. It wasn't necessarily on the basis of, you know, I was against West Ada's, you know, application, because I was in favor of that. I just didn't like the fact that, you know, that there's a potential, you know, situation where this, this, this piece of land could be landlocked. And so, I, however, I do believe, after talking with our legal counsel, that currently, you know, the, the piece of land is, there is access to it. And hopefully, in the future, you know, if, you know, Highway 16 does go down that, that corridor, that area, I, I would hope that, that ITD would make an arrangement with that landowner, and, and, and make it so that Mr. Hunter would, would have access, you know, to his property. I, I just, I don't see that there would ever be a point where Mr. Hunter would be completely landlocked. I don't think that, I don't know if that's legal even to, you know, put a road right there, and because of ITD's road, which creates a situation where future, you know, that, that land use is, is locked and not be able to be accessed, I, I think that, that, that would be negotiated with ITD prior to that, and I think that you would probably, that Mr. Hunter and, and would, would ultimately get access. I guess what I'm saying is, I don't think that your, your, the property's going to be landlocked after that right-of-way is taken care of with ITD, you know, for, for Highway 16. So, I think it's, I think it was sort of messy. I wish we would have taken care of it at the beginning. But I, like Councilman Palmer said, this is the process, and so, I, I would be in favor of denying this reconsideration, but knowing that, sort of messy, didn't like how it was, it ended, you know, with the motion, but I, I honestly feel that you're going to have access to your property if Highway 16, when it, when, when it's built, or when that property is, is purchased for that right-of-way, I think you're going to be taken care of with ITD.
Okay. Do you have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Milam?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
All ayes must carry. Item 6C is under community development, and we have Bruce here to present information on our position paper about the Idaho Electrical Inspector Qualification.
It's mouthful. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Wanted to first, just apologize yesterday for the, the confusion with getting the right version in front of you, and hopefully you have, you do have our position paper in your packets. We've talked to, I believe, all of you before about some of the difficulties we're having in filling some of the positions in building services. Of particular difficulty has been trying to find qualified individuals for our electrical program. We've been at this for nine months now, and we've been able to fill two positions. We have three more to go. Other Treasure Valley jurisdictions are having some of the same difficulties, not only in electrical, but in, in mechanical, plumbing, and building as well. We're all kind of competing for the same talent that's out there, and there's a very limited number of people in the market. A lot of this is because of the record low unemployment, obviously, but there's also, just with the, the growth and, and building activity that's going on, there's a very high demand for the trades. And so, qualified people that are out there are working in the trades, and they're making good money right now. And so, it's, it's tough. And there's not a lot of certified individuals that are entering the field of, you know, to be an inspector. Sometimes we see people that have been in the trades for a long time, and their bodies are just worn out, and they want to finish their careers out and be inspectors, and, and those people are pretty limited as well. With regard to, to the electrical in particular, current Idaho code requires that inspectors working in the state of Idaho have to be a four-year experienced journeyman electrician. Well, like I said before, if you're a journeyman electrician, you're out there making pretty good money right now, working in the, in the field. So, that has really been a difficulty for us, because a lot of our surrounding states don't have such a requirement. A lot of our surrounding states require different levels of certifications and qualifications to be an inspector. So, Idaho is a little bit of a disadvantage to these other states, competitive disadvantage, because of that So, one of the things that we really see as a problem is that our inability, not only Meridian's inability to hire individuals, but other Treasure Valley jurisdictions and across the state, is that this could have a slowing effect on building. If we can't meet service demands because we don't have enough inspectors to be able to go out and inspect the work that's being done, we're going to have backlogs of inspection requests that we can only get to, and it's going to slow things down a little bit. We are, with this position paper, we are proposing to allow other qualifying criteria in the state of Idaho. What we are proposing is the AIEI certification, which is another nationally-recognized certification. With the IAEI comes a pretty good list of qualifying criteria to even be able to take that test, some of which are qualifying hours. You know, you got to have some experience, demonstrated experience to be able to do that. The other certification that we've been looking at is the ICC, or the International Code Council. ICC is, is the body of codes that we use for building, mechanical, electrical, plumbing across the state. The problem with the ICC certification is it didn't have a lot of that qualifying criteria, and so, there was really an imbalance in the qualifying criteria for certification. So, what we did in our proposal was, we added some qualifying criteria to put the ICC and the IAEI on the same, you know, level for qualification. So, the proposal that we have for this, this change of legislation, we have discussed it with our stakeholders, we've discussed it with the Building Contractors Association, not only the local chapter, but also David Jorgensen, the Government Affairs Director, has taken it to the statewide BCA as well. We've also, Robert Sinison has taken this to the AIC Legislative Committee and had some conversation with them, too. We've got general support across all of those. I will say that the AIC Legislative Committee was also curious about mechanical and plumbing. What we see with mechanical and plumbing is, there are some similar problems with the way that the statutes are as far as qualifying criteria, but they're not, they don't rise to this level of the electrical. Electrical is really the one that has given us the most difficulty. But AIC does, does have some interest in possibly addressing the mechanical and plumbing, too. So, as we go through this, it might expand. They have expressed some interest in potentially carrying this legislation. And so, what we're seeking from you, we've never done one of these position papers, this is my first one, but what we're seeking from you is your support for the principles behind what we're trying to do here. And, you know, to go forward with this, understanding that, you know, as we go through the legislative process, there's more than likely going to be changes to the text. I mean, certain things can change as we go through this. So, that's where we're at, and that's what we're wanting to address with you, and get your, get your thoughts, and any comments or concerns you might have.
Thank you, Bruce. Council, any questions? Mr. Palmer.
I'm, my counsel here, just that I'm excited that you're moving forward with this plan, because, you know, we kind of discussed it a few months back, and to kind of be attacking this issue that we're having from every possible angle to, to get the people that we need. And I, I think, you know, legislative fixes often seem daunting, especially given our recent history, but they're, they're much more doable than I think a lot of people can realize, or realize, especially things that make sense, and this is definitely one of them. So, having everybody doing, doing all the due diligence in the backend to make sure everybody, possible, can be on board before we even get to the legislative session starting, hopefully have it go through as smoothly as possible. Good work.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. You know, we do, we do realize that this is not a short-term fix. This is a long-term thing. It's going to take some time. You know, one of the other things that Cameron has been, has been trying to approach, too, is what can we do with our local community colleges and trade schools, and, you know, we got to, we got to get more people into the industry. And so, again, those are long-term fixes, but if we don't start now working on that, we're just, we're just shooting ourselves in the foot, so...
Thank you, Bruce. Any further comment or questions from council?
Any direction?
I, I do think that our, our team would appreciate direction from council in the form of a motion.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Milam.
I move that we support the principles behind the Idaho Electrical Inspector Qualification Position Paper.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call all?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Milam?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, under Department Reports, we have item 7A is our Police Department Annual Report.
Madam Mayor and Counsel, Charlie and I disagree. We're going to flip-flop. I'm going to give the Fire Department update, and then he's going to give our update.
That's why you look so serious.
Yeah. Me or him?
You.
Oh, I was going to say, yeah, if I was asked to do the Fire Department update, Fire Station update, interesting. Madam Mayor and Counsel, as always, thank you for your time. This is the time where we're going to come in front of you and give you some updates on the PAM model, the patrol staffing, something I committed to several years ago, is coming back in front of you every December and having those talks. After listening to that last presentation from Bruce, you're going to find a similar story in what we have to share with you as far as our challenges in finding qualified staff as well. We have a few other items to update you on, and then, as always, I welcome any questions or any comments, and we can go any direction you want. And, of course, you know me as a chief. I can spend as much time up here as you'd like, but I have 23 slides that should go fairly quickly. So the areas of discussion that we chose today was to talk about staffing, share a few comments on serving our community, briefly talk about some school safety issues, give some highlights on the city emergency preparedness, talk briefly about the Sinaro Village project, talk about police substations, highlight some response times, calls for service, briefly talk about the PTSD legislation, going to have a short presentation from MADC, and then we'll just do a wrap-up, any questions or comments that you may have. As we currently stand, we are allocated 114 sworn officers, and we have 37 non-sworn personnel. And the bottom line is, our personnel work very, very hard to do a quality job with the resources that they have, but it's challenging every single day as we move forward, and that's just due to growth and the inability to fill positions. Current status is we have eight openings. We have two additional upcoming retirements that have been notified of, so that makes 10 openings. We've given three conditional offers that should start on April 8. We had a female officer start last week, and so she's not part of that, she'll be part of the group in April as well. She goes to the academy in January. And then I had to update this slide today, because when I originally did this slide, I had that we were testing 50 applicants. Well, that testing occurred on Saturday. We ended up inviting 38 applicants, because that's all that were qualified out of that 50. Out of those 38 that we invited, 30 showed up, and out of those that did show up, we whittled those down to 13, due to inability to pass the physical test, inability to follow directions, or inability to pass the written test, or other background issues that popped up. We haven't even oral interviewed them, so out of those 13, we're probably looking at one or two out of those eight to 10 positions that we have open. So needless to say, we're already planning on testing again right after the holidays. Been such a daunting task that we can't even close the application process. We leave it open until all positions are filled. That'll probably last until I decide to retire. But we are currently accepting positions for both certified and non-certified positions, doing everything that we can to fill those positions. We are also testing the four community service officers in mid-January. Those positions have, we've screened the applicants, and we have oral interviews mid-January to try to alleviate the pressure that our officers are facing out there. And then our Public Information Officer position is still open. We had gone through the process, chose a candidate, and then that candidate did not work out, therefore we had to start the process all over again, and that is occurring over the next couple of weeks. We continuously remain understaffed as we face this growth. We have difficulty filling the positions, as I just highlighted with you. Just to remind you that we added seven officer allocations in FY '17. And in the past, I've always talked about the calculations and how we came up to what we actually need out there, and I don't believe that, since I'm not the one that does the number crunching, that I've done the best job trying to explain what that all means. And I get this glazed look from you all going, "What are you talking about?" And so I have a separate handout that I'm going to give to you that will share with you some of the calculations that we used to cover those figures, but we won't talk about it here today. But I will just share with you that, if you recall, in our budget workshops last year, we said that the PAM model that we agreed to, with the most conservative estimates, indicated nine additional police officers needed based upon the growth that the city had faced, and that we had foregone hiring those positions for two reasons. One was the inability to fill the positions that we currently had, and then two is, the thought was to bring on those community service officers and see if we could reduce the workload of the day-to-day things for the police officers, and then use the higher-end type calls for an armed police officer. And so we didn't add those nine. But as we crunch the numbers of the miles of roadways we have grown, and all the growth in the population that we have faced, and currently we are looking at seven additional officers for FY '19. So if you've been there doing the math, Genesis, that's 26 officers.
Four. Oh, I'm not going to.
That's eight plus two plus nine plus seven. There is absolutely no way we are going to be able to fill those positions by finding quality applicants, nor could we train that many people in one year. So I have no idea what I'll be presenting to you in the budget process, but the mayor and I and our council liaison will figure out some sort of unique approach. But that's the news. And before I forget there, CJ, I'll hand out, give that handout so you can pass it on to the other council members. Out of that handout that I'm giving you, there's one slide in there that looks similar to this one that you see on your screen right there, and it just highlights how many officers we currently had, how many we added in '17, how many would be needed in '18, and how many would be needed in '19, based upon the PAM model figures. And I just gave you that handout. So we don't need to cover it any further, and I'll just take questions on it at the end, if there is any. Just so happens that two of our stars are in the audience here today, Lieutenant Sean Harper and Joe Bonjorno from the Fire Department. They've been working collaboratively together on school safety. Back last year, when we faced one of our many tragic school shootings, we got together and said, "What do we need to do on a local level to ensure that we're doing everything that we possibly can to make our schools safe?" There were some other things that had come up with people trying to take it upon themselves to make their schools safer, and in the process, we're really making the schools more unsafe with some of the actions that were taken. And we put these two gentlemen together to discuss response needs, and it really took off in a direction that we weren't really expecting in regards to how to respond to fire alarms, how to respond to active threats, and such. And once we got that local meeting together, we reached out to the other school districts, Kuna, Nampa, Boise, Meridian. I don't believe there was any more than that originally. But then the Governor of School Safety Task Force members became involved, and it soon became the platform for a statewide school safety standard. And I'm not going to go into too much more than that, because we currently have a presentation planned for January, I believe it's January 30th, with a joint meeting with the West Ada School District, when we're going to give a greater in-depth presentation on what's been occurring. But I will share with you that these two gentlemen are tasked with going to several conferences with stakeholders to present what they've done, because it's been taking notice statewide. So I'd just like to kind of thank them for the importance of this task, and not only being able to help us on a local level, but perhaps helping the school safety across our state. Serving our community, probably our greatest asset, no, it is our greatest asset, is our people. Our employees exemplify the Meridian way and our care values each and every day. I can tell you that, since I have been chief, I have seen a major cultural difference in just our internal workings, but in our interactions with our community as well. And I couldn't be more proud of what we see. That's not to say that we don't have the typical unhappy customer, because we still do. I guess that happens when you get arrested, but it's few and far between. And later on in this presentation, I have some additional comments in that regard. As I said before, we're continuously challenged with our staffing issues. I by no means put that on the backs of anyone. This council has been very supportive of our needs. They recognize our needs and have financed that. We are just facing a unexpected growth, and the inability to find those key people to fill those positions is a challenge, but we're making it work. But I have to recognize that some days I don't know how our people do what they do, and it's appreciated. Also, it's not a secret to you all, it's been a challenging year for our people. We have faced some things that no one ever wants to face in their careers, yet they've been very resilient and still get the job done. And so I thank them for that. You heard from code enforcement a few weeks ago. I also know that a few councilmembers reached out and asked additional questions, so I'm not going to talk about anything on that in regards today. If you do have additional questions, you can reach out to Rich, or to Lieutenant Colani, or myself, and we'll make sure that we get those questions answered for you. We also wanted to do a detailed community service crime prevention presentation, but Stephanie is getting ready to go out on to family leave. We just hired a new crime prevention officer, and we would like to come back at a future date after March to give you a presentation on what they're doing with that second position, if it would be okay with you. Just a couple of other things, because of the nature of the holidays, want to do some couple highlights. Our annual shop with the cop is this weekend, to assist some of those kids out there that may not have the best Christmas, so we'll do our part to help them. We're also assisting local families again this holiday. We've picked two families this year to help have a great Christmas. Recently just did break up Meridian with the association. And I will tell you that our Meridian Police Employees Association do things every single month in this city, and they do good things for not only our employees, but for the community. And I would encourage you to follow them on Facebook if you don't already. Just wanted to highlight this, because it's been challenging, looking at the overtime in our Criminal Investigations Division. Because of some of those lengthy calls, we exceeded our overtime budget in CID. I know that we always keep a close eye on that, and so that's always a concern. But despite the staffing issues we've had, despite the cases that we've had, we were able to return 10% of our overtime budget back to the general fund this past year. I will tell you this, that I don't know how that was possible, but it was. And we welcome that. That's a good sign. I don't have to explain to you why we're 10% over, but maybe this is my way of saying we might be 10% over next year. I don't. So we continually keep a close eye on that, and I will tell you, the trick that we use to get the instant report is using our open.gov, the transparency page that we put to our citizens. It is easier for me to go click on that and get the answer than it is to go through our own internal database to get that information. So it's there at the tip of your fingertips for any department that you want. Couple other highlights. You know, Meridian and Nampa has bantered back and forth of who's the biggest, probably who's the best. I know I had that conversation with just the previous chief here two weeks ago. But we're pretty unique in the size of our cities and the number of our people, and really kind of unique in how we value our people and how we do things. And so we had joined with them to work on some training issues where we might be able to save some monies to train together. And then to help each other out as well, they're facing the same challenges they are of filling positions, and I know that they have a need for about 50 new bodies over the next five years. So they're in the same boat as we are. What's Plan B if we can't fill those positions? And that's the MOUs, and working together and training together. And so we worked with Idaho Post, State Post, and we have received certification to do our own training academy, if that's what we need. Why is that significant? So we don't have to wait until Post offers a class. So if we are able to get enough, get fortunate enough to get enough people on board, we can do our own academies over and over again to try to get those people on the road just as soon as possible. The other thing that we've done in the Police Department is we used to have a once-a-month training day. And we have grown so much that, and in trying to cover staffing, that's been difficult to do. Training is the highest, one of the highest priorities we have in our department. We know that if we have well-trained people, that we have happy people, and we have people that don't get sued. that don't get assued. And therefore, we had to look for unique ways to continue that training. And so we put together a block training. Block training is a week training where we establish a week loaded training, and we have all instructors together in that you show up for one week and that's all you do is train, train, train. And then once you're done training, you go back and hit the road. And we do that for six to eight weeks, so we don't have to try to schedule monthly now. So that's worked, that's worked really well for us so far. One of the other moments, probably one of our proudest moments, if you highlight back many, many, many years ago, we had Mike Tanner from IT had decided to come work for the City of Meridian. And he's a computer programmer, and he's, let's just say he's good at what he does. And he wrote a report writing program for us, and it evolved into a case management program. And then we've had other computer programs out there for records management, CAD, computer aided dispatch and such. And we've had difficulties at best with our RMS system, and our RMS records management system has always been in joint partnership with the City of Boise and Ada County. And so we decided to do our own. Not only does that save us in excess of $800,000, plus the yearly maintenance fees on top of that, ours is getting ready to be up and running and Ada County's still waiting. Going live January 1. So Mike, between Mike Tanner and IT, Dave T D and under his leadership, my records unit and our crime analysis unit, we have written our own RMS program, got it state certified, got it FBI certified, and we're good to go. We'll see how it goes, but this has been a two-and-a-half-year project, trying to get it done on top of all the other city needs. But kudos to that group of people for, once again, highlighting the good work that they do. Probably our, well, cross our fingers if it works, Mike, it's probably our proudest, proudest moment. And it, and it does work, we just haven't gone live on it yet. Mercy preparedness. Chief Niemeyer had talked about this a little bit last month, I believe it was last month, and I just wanted to highlight what we've done. We've always put our employees' safety as party number one, paramount to anything that we all do. And we've done a lot of work on putting together an emergency response plan, but it seemed like it always hiccuped, 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 hiccuped. And trying to get everybody together and have a meeting and plan, and we just said, this isn't working. And so the chief and I had said, okay, let's just take this under our wings and get this together, and then we can present it. And so we put together an emergency response plan, got the mayor involved, got the, so she could put a forward into it, a letter into it, and then got Casey Emery involved for a little bit of the marketing side. And then it's currently in the hands of Joe Bonjorno and Lieutenant Harper to take the wording that we have in there and convert it over to the new wording that we're using for the school safety stuff, so it's all consistent, as much as it makes sense, if we need to keep some of the old stuff in there. Wanted to have that ready to go before the snow hit. I guess we missed that deadline since we had snow last week. The snow that we're supposed to get this week hasn't come yet. But we're not rushing it, we want to make sure it's right, it exists. And then once it's vetted out to all the subject matter experts, we're going to have it posted on the Intranet, so everybody has access to it. But with that being said, it also incorporates the winter emergency response that we had. We're good to go on that. Cross our fingers that we don't need to use it, but I do recall them saying it was going to be a light winter and very warm, and so far it's not been so light and it's not been so warm. So we'll see what happens. But the other responses that the manual covers is active threats, medical, fire, all those typical things that you would face on a, potentially on a daily basis, or at least the unknowns in there. Scenario Village, this has been an ongoing project that got delayed for a little while just because frankly, we couldn't find anybody that would bid our project. We were so small compared to what else was going out there, it was challenging at best. So CSHQA was the only one that had submitted a bid, and then we had to sit down with them and work through them to highlight a timeline where they're available to actually do the work. I mean, they're working on a $50 million project, and we had a $50,000 project, and so you know who's going to get the highest priority. So working through them, we did come up with a contract, and the timeline that I gave them was the end of January to have some conceptual designs in place so that we could start preparing for the FY19 budget workshops. Not knowing what we're going to do with that, at least we'd have that knowledge. But I will tell you that if we're going to have cost estimates, or as more actualities and estimates or guesses, we're going to need additional money for a CM to come up with those estimates. Otherwise, all I'm going to be able to give you is a best guess, and then I'm going to have to come back and explain why we went over. So we'll have to strategize where we go, once we get those conceptual designs in place, and then start talking about a timeline. I will tell you that impact fees can be used for a part of that, about 22% of the project, and those impact fees have an expiration date. And we are in, I think, year five of those expiration dates, so we have to commit that money to a project sooner rather than later. Otherwise, we have to refund those monies. So that will be future discussion. Police substation. At one point in time, we had designed a building back in 2002 for future expansion. And talking with probably a couple chiefs back, he said that, you know, we probably wouldn't expand much at this department, we'd expand out into a substation. Well, we've done both. We've added 2,500 square feet onto our building. We are running out of space as it stands. We have a substation out there and a fire station that we utilize for report writing purposes, but doesn't fulfill the need for our citizens. And so the original concept was to put additional substations in, fire stations, and we felt that that was not the appropriate model. So we started looking at locations for substations. Originally, we were focused in on the Village because, frankly, because we had Kleiner Park there, $25 million project, quite proud of that. We wanted to make sure that we had law enforcement on site that could make sure that that place remained something we could be proud of. The Village, through their security, and it was a little rough at first, but then they modified that, and then working with their security stepped up. And we haven't, well, and I guess the fact that Toby Keith's bar didn't show up either was probably another mechanism why it was a little bit more under control out there. But it doesn't make any sense to put a substation out there when you do have to respond out there. It's fairly quick to get there from the police department. Where it does make sense to have a substation is in the northwest part of the city, in the growth out there, the growth center out there. Takes 25 minutes to get there currently. And so we're looking at something on the Shindon Corridor for a substation where a citizen might be able to go do some business at that substation without having to drive all the way down to the police department, such as pay fines or fees or make certain requests, file reports and such. So we're currently exploring that. It's in the CFP, but also you're going to find a second substation in the CFP for, it's closer to 10 years out, in the southeast portion of the city. If you've known that out there, it's starting to pick up and it's starting to grow. We have the Y out there, and we have Albertsons coming out there, and we have all those developments out there that, although we don't have a crystal ball from what we see so far, that's going to be another growth area that we're going to have to concentrate on in the future. And again, it takes about 20 minutes, 25 minutes to get to that end of the city limits from the current police department. So those are two areas that we're looking at over the next few years to 10 years. Again, I will share with you that impact fees can be used 100% for these substations if we own them in our standalone. And without getting into it too much right now, both finance and legal have indicated that we're in year five of those funds, and we have to, we have eight years to spend them. So we have some work to do on that, too. We might be able to use that toward that northern substation. And then just that last bullet point is, we have many people working on this right now. We have the admin, police department admin, we have finance, we have legal, we have our impact consultant team that's working on it as well. This was also talked about a little bit last month in Chief Niemeyer's presentation on PTSD legislation. I'll just give you a couple more of our highlights, is that as it stands right now, in order for workman's comp to address any injuries to a first responder out there, there has to be some sort of physical injury, cannot be any mental injury. And unfortunately for us, we've experienced some tragic things over this last year that has really brought to light the mental welfare of our people. And I know that when you talk to people, they talk about, well, how much is this going to cost? Well, it's already costing us. And I can tell you that when you have both firefighters and police officers that are taking their own life at a higher rate than being lost in the line of duty, we have a And we talk about asking people to share with us when they need help, yet we don't offer help. And when I'm speaking of this, I'm speaking as a whole, as in general, because we, as a city, do a very fine job of trying to take care of our people. But we need to have that mechanism in place. And we talk about asking for help if you need it, yet then we put a stigma on you that, oh, you asked for help, but we're not going to help you and hit the road. And so we have a lot of work to do. You'll probably see a bill show up in the legislature. There's still a lot of questions that ADB worked through. But I just ask you to review that bill and then reach out to both chiefs, and let's talk about this together to see what we can do to make sure that our first responders are cared for. Because there is a cost, and is there an upfront cost, or how much does that cost in the end? And of course, when someone loses their life, that's the ultimate cost. And yes, I do kind of take this personal because of some of our experiences we faced this past year. But I'll share with you that we just have to evaluate what we do to try to keep the people that we have, because we're not having any luck filling those positions that are open. So that's all I have on that for now.
Chief?
Yes, ma'am.
I think that you want council to weigh in on this at some point. When would there be a draft that would be available? And would you be preparing a white paper for this council to consider?
Madam Mayor, Council, I know that as the legislative session comes closer, there's going to be a draft bill in place. I do not have my hands on it. I do know that there's another meeting next week. As soon as I have it in my hands, I'll make sure that it's to the appropriate people. Then we have to vet it out to see what sort of unintended consequences the current draft would face, try to get the answers to those financial analysis questions, and then we'll write something up for this council to consider, and we'll go from there.
And I think they've done some of that cost analysis to date.
They have done some of that cost analysis. I will tell you that I do not have the answer to this question, and one of the things that piqued my interest is that I was recently asked, well, what does this have to do? What would this, how would this face, how would this face someone that's self-insured? And then all of a sudden, that triggered me in that I just sat through last month the discussion of that being a potential direction that we were going to go in the future years with council. And I knew that that was a question I had to get answered. I do not have that answer yet. I wouldn't think that it would impact us often, and it would impact us greatly, but we have to run those figures, and I'll share with you. As soon as I know it, I'll share it with this group. Does that answer the questions, I think?
So you most likely will be back after the beginning of the year with...
Madam Mayor, Council, having flashbacks on how I presented last time in front of council on legislative issues, yes, I will be back, or someone will be back. But it's important enough that we have to talk about it.
Thank you.
Just wanted to give a few minutes to discuss something you're going to see in your dashboards every quarter that we give you anyways. But I went back and started to do a review on response times. And to let you know that a Code 1 response is just a normal driving response, a Code 2 response is an urgent response, and a Code 3 response is an emergency response. So if you're calling to report a not in-progress type report type call, you could expect to see an officer there between 12 and 15 minutes. Now, I will share with you that these are averaged from the responses for the entire city. So some people may get a shorter response, some people may get a longer response. And then depending on what's going on there in the city at any particular time, it could be a longer wait. But the average time is 12 to 15 minutes for a Code 1 response. Code 2 response averages about 78 minutes. This is one that is a little bit more critical in that a Code 2 response has a wide gamut of type calls, alarm calls, berderie calls, that sort of thing, in that we don't have any chance of catching anybody if it takes us seven, eight minutes to get there, because you already have a delay time of five minutes before an alarm comes in. But other type calls that are urgent but not an emergency, you're going to be waiting for a little bit to get an officer there. for a little bit to get an officer there. Still not within our parameters of what we think is reasonable, but it could be felt a lot longer than seven or eight minutes if you're the one asking for a police response. And then our code three response or emergency responses, we average four minutes. That doesn't change much. Sometimes you see 3.9, sometimes you see 3.8 if you're really lucky, sometimes you'll see 4.21. It really averages about four minutes. We have a range of three to five minutes. Three minutes would be really awesome, but even three minutes is too long when you're the one that's waiting for help. Anytime you call 911 and you need someone there quickly, the quickest we're going to get there is four minutes. So something to keep in mind with the staffing that we have, that's not going to improve. It's four minutes. And then just to tell you something you probably already know, traffic-related type calls are one of our biggest calls for service. Our crashes have seen an increase, but that's also because we've seen a population increase. Sometimes our infrastructure, I don't know if sometimes is the word, almost always our infrastructure is delayed to our growth. And so we're trying to fit a lot of people onto those roadways. And it creates issues for us. Although I will share with you that if you think that you're having traffic issues here, I just spent a week in Portland and we don't have any issues whatsoever to complain about. This is kind of sad. Now, this is sad. A lot of the calls we deal with are crisis-related type calls, mental health calls, welfare check calls, overdose-type calls, people doing crazy thing type calls. And almost always it's tied to narcotics. And it takes up a great portion of our time, it takes a great portion of our resources, and we're just busy. Now, I don't think any town or city wants to say that the crisis center of the whatever. So I'll share with you that we're not unique. This is something that is occurring not only in this valley, in this state, but across the United States. We're not any different than what's facing out there. We have a lot of people that are struggling with substance abuse, mental health issues, and frankly, there's just not enough facilities to get them the help that they need. One thing that we're hopeful for is when we have the new hospital opening up here soon in Meridian, that they'll be able to handle some of our crisis needs that come up. But frankly, if you don't have an insurance, you don't get any help unless you get arrested and into the system. And the system's broken and I don't know what the answer is to fix that. So we also deal with domestic violence. You've heard me say it before, that even one is too many. And as much as we educate and educate and educate, we still deal with it on a weekly, if not daily, basis. So let's all work together to try to help those that are close to us get the help they need or get out of those circle of violence relationships if we can. And then although we have our crimes against persons that we face, our number one thing that we deal with is property crimes and it's usually theft-related shoplifting. Unfortunately, with us growing so much and having buildings, some of our thefts have been construction thefts. We've worked with the Builders Association on how to put in place preventive measures to try to reduce those crimes of opportunity. We put together a handout that has not only our logo on it, but BCA's logo on it that we've been working with, I believe, planning to get it out there as a flyer. So when you come in and ask for a building permit, you get notice right off the bat. This is what you should do to make sure that your properties are protected. So we're working all together to solve those crimes. And to date, I believe we've arrested seven people for construction thefts, but it's still occurring. And it's not just occurring in Meridian, it's occurring in Eagle as well and Boise, too. So we're doing everything we can to try to reduce or prevent those crimes. And then just some couple highlights. We average approximately, average approximately 13,000 calls for service per quarter. And if you look at our daily log, it's, we range between 140 and over 200 calls for service a day. And we continue to have more public calls for service, reactive type calls for service than we have officer calls for service where they proactively take enforcement. So continually, I think you'll see the handout I gave you, there's a chart in there, what our goal is versus what we currently are at in regards to public calls for service. And this is a point in time that we want to share with you, something that's been MADC and others have been working on for a while now. It's a proposed fundraiser and it is, has to do with a SRO assigned a canine in our schools. And they want to highlight the interaction they've had with both our department and with West Ada School District in making this happen. And so I'd like to, well, before I introduce her, I'll just share with you, I have a couple more slides as a wrap-up and then when Kendall's done. But at this point in time, I'd like to invite Kendall up and then have Kendall Nagy present to you on this opportunity. Kendall?
Thank you, Chief. Madam Mayor, members of the council, I appreciate the time, being here and being able to give a quick update and request your future support on one of the projects that the coalition is working on. I speak on behalf of the coalition members, our community members, and then also West Ada School District and all the students that attend, which I believe is nearly 47,000 this year. And what we're working on is putting together a project. We went through, and since I started in 2015, when I'm out in the community, I ask what prevention strategies have been most useful and impact the most community members. And across the board, talking to school admin, nurses and counselors, they've said that the canine visits impact the entire student body. So with some of our other efforts, we'll get some of the kids that are interested in they come to us and visit us at a booth or with one of our other strategies. And this is one that, making an announcement ahead of time and giving a broad date range of when they might come and then having them present in the school for the sniff, and then afterwards, there's conversation that happens as well. And that affects everyone and gets all the student body talking. So it's the ones that really need to be having that conversation and raising that prevention awareness. And then also, of course, reducing drugs in the schools. We've also seen this be extremely handy in the states that have legalized marijuana, having those canines in the schools and keeping the numbers lower for the amount of marijuana seen in the schools there. So there've been a lot of preliminary meetings that have already taken place. I've met with Lieutenant Stokes, who oversees the canine division, also Lieutenant Harper with the school resource officers. I've met with West Ada School District Board members. And what we're proposing, what the coalition is proposing, is that we raise $85,000, which is the initial startup cost for the first year of this project. And then going forward to sustain this and have the SRO-assigned canine in the schools will be an estimated cost of $14,000 a year. And we propose that that is split between West Ada School District and the City of Meridian. And that is where we're requesting your future support. I've already met with the directors at West Ada School District and they said that they support this project. And obviously, we're working very well ahead of the game. And our date range and planning for this project is based on when the police department is planning to bring on more canines and train those so that we can streamline the training process and have this done all at once. And so we're looking at an implementation date of spring of 2021. So if we get approval to move forward and have support for that sustaining cost going forward, then I will let coalition members know that we have roughly a year to raise those startup funds. And we'll be looking at, we have different strategies and ideas that coalition members have shared and we've discussed. And then I'm also aware of a few grant opportunities to help with that funding as well. The bulk of that cost is to purchase a canine-equipped vehicle. That's going to be a big chunk of the change. And we will be using an existing SRO as a handler rather than bringing on a new SRO. And then obviously, we will need to purchase the canine. So I stand for any questions.
Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylan.
I don't really have any questions, but I think that's a fantastic idea. I'm fully supportive. And I'd have to argue, I don't even know, but I would bet money that the states that haven't legalized marijuana have just as many or more drugs as the states that do. What I've heard from kids.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
We appreciate the support and the opportunity to update you and we will obviously be back with updates as we move forward. Thank you.
Kendall, we have you up here and I apologize I wasn't here at the beginning of your presentation, but do you want to give a little brief overview of the legislative gathering you held and the movie that they were able to view, The Chronic State? And just give us a little bit of maybe feedback that you've received?
Sure, absolutely. So we held a legislative educational session for Ada County legislators, and we, meaning MADC and key partners, arranged that. We had Community Coalitions of Idaho as a key partner, St. Luke's Health Services, Idaho State Police, Idaho Office of Drug Policy, and obviously Meridian Police Department as key partners in supporting that. And while we did have a lower attendance, it was a smaller intimate affair. We didn't publicize, I wanted to focus on legislators and education. We did have, out of the nine districts that were invited, I've had correspondence with six of them, different members. And then what we did is we previewed or showed Chronic State, which is a documentary that was produced by Drug Free Idaho. And it highlights and has information from the states that have legalized marijuana and the unintended consequences and the impact that they're seeing in communities very similar, some of them shape to ours and population, and the unintended consequences of that and that marijuana normalization. And so I recommend that each of you, I included you on some of that correspondence and I recommend that each of you view that. And as we move into the next legislative session, I do know I've met with Representative Dorothy Moon and she will be sponsoring another CBD bill this next session. I have not seen that bill yet, but we've got tabs on it and she did say that it would be similar to a bill that we saw last session.
And the link to watch Chronic State is, it was in the email that Kendall sent out. And if you haven't had a chance to view it, it's highly recommended. Any other questions or comments? Okay? Thank you.
Appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thanks, Kendall.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, counsel, I guess I could highlight some of my other Portland experiences over the weekend in regards to that, but I won't. Let's save that for a different time. As I was in a gas station. In closing, just wanted to talk about a couple of the other key areas that we're kind of proud of is, last year, if you recall, we got high remarks on our citizen survey. In fact, they were so high that you don't often see those results in your police department. And so we're quite proud of that. Recently, we just had high remarks in our recent employee engagement survey, which is our internal survey as well, to the point where when you were trying to pick out areas to work on improvements on, it was kind of hard to figure out what areas that you wanted to work on. That was difficult, but the more difficult part is we've set the bar so high that being able to maintain or challenge ourselves to do even better is going to be much harder. We're a values-based organization. We really take it seriously in who we are, what we represent, and how we treat our people, both internally and externally. They're not just words anymore. They actually mean something to our people. We've seen a noticeable change in the comments, the positive comments we receive via social media, email, phone calls, letters, face-to-face, on a daily basis. It is unbelievable what I receive on how good our people are doing. If you recall, many, many years ago, we had proposed a body-worn camera program. We really proposed it before. It was, I won't say forced, but was highly recommended, that it was needed out there for law enforcement. And we had a few officers that were wondering why we were going down that route and did we not trust them? And they said it wasn't about not trusting you, it was a matter of proving the good that you do every single day. And I tell you that perhaps the body-worn cameras contribute to that, but they capture the good that our officers do each and every day. So what is our secret? And frankly, it's our people. And they make me, they make you all look good for the work that they do. So this is just a big thanks to them. I usually thank them at the beginning, the thanks at the end, because I knew I'd have a hard time through it. So with that, deep breath, and I'll answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions? Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, chief, going back to your points about substations, is it common that we have calls where officers are having to respond from the station?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Palmer, yes. As you recall, we are very, very busy, yet we also have to, part of our job is logging in evidence, part of it is switching out other equipment, part of it is the dreaded report writing. And we write those reports at the station. And so it is not uncommon to have a direct emergency response out of the police department because that's where they're doing all of those duties. If we have enough staff that is dispersed amongst the city, then I guess one could argue that there is a less need, but then you would still have to go somewhere to log evidence, do report writing, and all those other things that come with, not just the field duties that we have to do.
Ms. Laura Roberts.
Madam Mayor, not a question, just wanted to say thank you, having been the previous liaison through, watching all of this in action. You and your team do an absolutely amazing job. And the morale in your team is phenomenal, especially considering what you've been through this year. I think it could have decimated a less amazing group of people, but from what I've seen, you've banded together even harder and stronger and come out, are still coming out through it. But kudos over and over from the bottom of my heart for all that you and your team do. do.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Lowell Roberts, we had two choices to make. We could either fall apart, or we could, we could band together stronger, and we chose the latter, so, yeah.
Well, and kudos to your command staff, too. I, I think that the leadership and the whole PD family rallied, and, and that goes a long way. I, I would just like to send my, my comments to Counsel, that support you showed during that, that period has gone a long way, and that was greatly appreciated. And Counselmember Lowell Roberts was very engaged in the Police Department, just like the liaison prior to her with Ms. Mylum. And, and now, Mr. Palmer, I, I think that that relationship is really important, and that interaction with the, the command staff goes a long way. And I, I just want to express my appreciation to Counsel, that during that time, I, I saw not just the PD family, but the city family really coalesce and, and join arms and, and show the support to our emergency responders, because it, it certainly reached out into our fire department as well. So, thank you to our leaders.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
In your presentation, Chief, you said that it's amazing what you're able to accomplish, and you don't know how you're able to accomplish what you guys do with the amount of resources that you have. That sort of struck a chord with me to a certain degree, because I think it's evident. I, I, I feel this way, and I know that there's not a single Councilmember that's sitting in this dais right now that, that feels differently. But you have the best thing, Police Department of State of Idaho.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, you're testing me now, because now you're going to make me do this, and the only one that usually does this is, is.
I'm so glad it's not just me. Thank you.
And I know what's going on in your mind when, when you're talking this, and so, I know how difficult that is. But we're dedicated to this community, and we'll do whatever we can to, to do the best job that we can. But we're also realist in that we know that there's those little things that people wish that we could do more of, that we don't. And whether that's spending an extra 10 minutes running radar in a, in a neighborhood, or some other minor thing, we get to it, but we have to prioritize our, our calls. And most of our citizens really, really get that. They really, really understand that, and we're successful. But one of the things that makes us unique, and one of the reasons why we've been able to claim we're one of the safest cities in, in, in our state, is because we still deal with those little things. Because those little things, if they're left unhandled, become medium things, and then they become the large things. And for all those reasons, that is why people are coming to Meridian, is because their communities stopped dealing with the medium things. Their communities stopped dealing with, with the little things. And it came to a point where their communities, they no longer wanted to live in. And so, that's where it's challenging for us, and that's where it, it concerns me, is that we don't have the time to deal with every single little thing that we used to be able to deal with. And I just know that if we don't get a handle on this, that eventually, we're going to have to get to a point where we can no longer deal with those little things. And that's the part that concerns me, and that's the part that we have to continually discuss. So, yeah, they do some amazing, amazing things. But we also have to realize that they are human, and that we can't run them to the ground either. And so, it's challenging. But yes, they do amazing work. So, I appreciate those heartfelt comments.
Madam Mayor, Paula.
Yes.
You know, also, Chief, oh, sorry.
No, still off.
Wait a minute. It was on. I need to get closer. How about that? One other thing, you know, I, I believe, you know, this, your department, another reason for its success starts at the top, Chief. And to pick on some, some of your staff that's here in the audience, you know, Lieutenant Harper, Coliani, Kendall, I guarantee you that if you asked them, getting together, Trent, geez, my goodness gracious. Is it allergies? Is that it?
It's the cold, the cold air.
I don't think there's any allergy. You are, too. All right, good. But I, I guarantee you, if you were to ask them to run through a wall for you, that they would do it.
I wouldn't ask that.
And so, I, I, I know.
I, I know a few of them would try, so I think I might ask them, but.
I know, I know that, I know that, I know that they would. And, and, and that's the reason why you have so much success in your department, is because of your leadership and your strong staff and those who work for you and do such a great job. And I can't thank, I can't thank you guys enough and your staff and, and command staff, lieutenants, and those who work for you. You guys do a fantastic job. But I also wanted to thank Mr. Harper and Mr. Bonjourno for your safety initiatives that you're doing at the schools. Such a big deal, and I think that it, it, we need to be prepared for when it happens here in Meridian, because I, and I say when, it will happen here. Hopefully, not, but no surprises, but I, I, I commend you for, for preparing us for that situation, so that when it does happen, we're prepared. So, thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, I've, I've never disagreed with Councilmember Burnt, so I got to disagree with him on the record. They would not run through a wall for me. They would run through a wall for our citizens.
There you go. I agree with that. Spoken from a true leader.
Any other questions of our chief? Would like to echo the, the comments about the school safety work that's been going on and that has been recognized across the state. We're excited to have the report and, and next month, along with the, at our joint meeting with the school board, and that they can hear the dedication between fire and police. And, and again, I, it just goes to a testament of the first responders we have in our two departments, that, that collaboration and working together is, is unmatched, I think, by any department in this, in this state, and probably, yeah. Yeah, so, anyway, we're, we're proud of our first responders, for sure, in our departments.
Madam Mayor, Counsel, just in closing, I guess I'll share with you then, based upon what you just said, is that we had the pleasure of looking at a 13-minute video that we just put together for the Police Patrol Academy that is going to be starting in January, where our police and fire departments work together to film this, to show how it should be done. And we are the, the stars of that, that video, and there's other people. In fact, Charlie Specter, too, I saw him get his autograph. He's there, just highlighting the relationships that we have, because what we do have here is, is, is very unique.
It's special.
But it can be emulated across the state if they so choose. And so, we're going to start sharing that as well. And I'll just leave it by saying, if I don't see you, happy holidays, and I thank you for your time today.
Thanks, Chief. Okay, Adam Semenbe is under our Fire Department, an update on Fire Station Number Six. Welcome, Charlie.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. This is the monthly update for Fire Station Number Six. I'll start off with the most current rendering that we have of the station by our design team. It's a beautiful station, as you can see. I'll start off also with the timeline. So, an update on the current timeline, the complete set of plans from our design team will be given to the construction team in a couple of days, and that is the final set for bidding. ESI, our construction team, will create bid packages from that set of plans, divvying up the different sections, earthwork, steel, masonry, plumbing, electrical, et cetera, creating those packages that will then go out to bid. So, it'll take them a few weeks to do that. So, the plan is to, to have those scopes go out to the subcontractors for bidding in early January. As the subcontractors have, perform all their bids, they'll have all of those bids back to ESI for a bid, final bid opening on January 29th. After that, we will have what is known as the Guaranteed Maximum Price, and then in February, we will be coming to Counsel with the Guaranteed Maximum Price of this station from ESI, and a budget amendment at that time to be presented for City Council's review and hopeful approval. As I have mentioned in several of my last updates, the timeline is on schedule for us to break ground in March, and we will have a groundbreaking ceremony in late February or early March for everybody to attend. I do want to step back and just review the entire project from the inception of this. When I was initially tasked with this project, we were looking at what a fire station would need in 20 years for this particular location. Let's build for the future, let's look at the future, where are we going to be at in the future? And, and based on the current development and growth in the area, and projected development and growth in the area, we said we're going to need a good-sized fire station. We're going to need three apparatus bays, we're probably going to be running two companies out of there, possibly an engine company and a truck company, or a rescue company and an engine company. But we realized in 20 years, with the growth, we're going to need enough space for the equipment and the people to run two companies out of there. 16,500 square feet was what we were looking at, eight firefighter bedrooms, battalion chiefs' quarters. So, when we initially started out with that 20-year vision, again, this is going to be a building that's planned to be around for 50, 60, 70 years, but in 20 years, what we're anticipating was this. And we came up with an estimated cost of nine to 10 million, and said, well, that's, that's not going to work. So, what other options can we do? So, with that in mind, we scaled this down in, in collaboration and work with our design team. We said, well, we want to build what we need today, but the ability to, in the future, add on what we're expecting to come in 20 years. So, we scaled down the size, we scaled down the scope, and we ended up with this smaller station with the ability to add on those elements in the future when that need comes. So, we removed an additional apparatus bay, we went down to two instead of three, we removed the battalion chiefs' quarters, and we removed three of the firefighters' bedrooms. Ultimately, reduced the entire scope of the project by about 6,000 square feet. That went out to an estimate of the cost, which came in at about 7.9 million. At that time, this was in April of this year. So, my direction to our design team and our construction team at this particular point was, that's still too much money, but we really have narrowed down the square footage to the square footage we need. So, what can we do as a team to reduce the cost, but still maintain square footage without cutting into square footage? So, looking at reductions in, in additional scope and design. So, we refined it. We kept that square footage, but we refined the scope, the design, the layout, some of the costs, some of the building materials that were initially estimated in that, some assumptions that were being made on cost. And as my direction was to our team, we're not going to take a scalpel to this, we're going to take a chainsaw to it, and we're going to get this narrowed down. So, we were able to reduce the price down another $1.6 million without cutting square footage. A lot of hard work went into that. The estimated cost at that point, this was my update to City Council on August 28th, of $6,345,545. Still not entirely happy with that amount, I said, we can do a little bit better. Let's see how much more, without reducing square footage, can we get this down? So, since my August update to City Council, we have cut the costs. We've gone down about another $180,000. So, our current estimated overall cost is at $6,161,118. And that is keeping in mind the 10,500-square-foot building, two apparatus bays, and five firefighter bedrooms. And I do want to articulate, when I say that that is the total cost, that is the total project cost of $6,161,118. So, this kind of breaks it down a little bit. Five million is within the industry, they call the hard construction costs, so the building and site improvements, just the building in itself, by itself, is about 3.8 million. The site improvements, so that's all the landscaping, the cost to put in the emergency signalization, the concrete for the apparatus to drive around, to drive out in front, is about 1.2 million. And then you can see here what the design engineering consultants, pre-construction costs break down, and then permits, equipment, fixtures, furniture, signalization equipment that we have to purchase through ACHD, allowances, contingency, kind of round out that number. So, when we talk about this number, this is the entire total cost of the project. So, after we've kind of whittled this down, the conversation has been brought about from our team, well, what about adding in one of those components that you'd cut out earlier in the game, the battalion chiefs' quarters in particular? So, the design team and the construction team have looked at that, and I said, well, what, what would it cost to add that back in? Since we're going to have all of the contractors on-site doing work, if we were to add that in, what kind of cost would we be looking at? And they said about $61,000 right now is the estimated cost if we were to add in the battalion chiefs' quarters. So, that's a bedroom, a bathroom, and an office. If we were to do it later, in talking with the construction team, if we were just to leave this off, come back at another date, add in the battalion chiefs' quarters, they said it will be double to triple that cost, because then you're bringing in contractors, there's going to have to be removal of exterior walls to then create this area for this. There is a need for this. Right now, we currently do have a battalion chief on duty 24 hours a day out of Station One. He is running out of, they have some quarters that have been set up in an old admin section of Station One, where an old conference room was somewhat turned into a bedroom. The bathroom is the old bathroom, it used to be the public bathroom. So, we are able to right now have the battalion chiefs over at Station One, and they do respond out of there. But this would create that own quarters for them. As you know, when we do have responses with the battalion chiefs, they don't respond on every call, so there are times that the apparatus and the individuals in the fire station, the firefighters, do respond on calls that the battalion chief doesn't, and vice versa. So, sometimes that ability for them to have their own space, that they're not going to be interrupted by other moving people, can be very beneficial. So, looking forward to update, in February, I'll be presenting Counsel, myself and Chief Niemeyer, with the Guaranteed Maximum Price and the Budget Amendment. And so, tonight, I'm not looking for any specific decisions or votes on adding in the battalion chief quarters. I do just want to bring it up, that it'll be presented to you in the future, when we do come with the final recommendation, that we, a cost A and a cost B, essentially. Here's the overall cost for the project, including the battalion chiefs' quarters and the project not including the battalion chiefs' quarters. So, it's more of an update to let you know that that is forthcoming for informational purposes right now. So, with that, that concludes my update, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Charlie. Yes, Mr. Burnt.
Madam Mayor, Charlie, thank you for your presentation. Just one quick question, so a lot of dates in there, new dates, you know, groundbreaking, and when we're going to get information, and when we'll be making decisions on costs and so, so forth. Are we still on track to opening this thing up in January, February of the following year?
That is correct. That is the, my understanding from the construction crew, that we have 12 months of build time. And that has been what I've reported in the past, yes.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Thank you for the update and, and the, looks like cost savings, Charlie. As far as the battalion chief quarters, is there nowhere else that's more centralized that they, that anything could be added on for them? Or we just, this is the only location, and is appropriate to have them far one end of the valley?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Mylum, I think the expense to try to add this on to someplace else, based on what the kind of expense we're looking at to add this on into the construction of this current one, I think would, as was pointed out, it could be double to triple. Also, again, looking into the long-term future, as we do add additional stations on the projected growth of the city, we will likely move into two battalions. So, we'll, once we have seven and eight fire stations, that's generally a time that you end up with two battalions. So, you could very well in the future have a South Meridian Battalion and a North Meridian Battalion, with the interstate being the split. So, there is that potential in the future growth projections of, of my vision of where I see us going. Uh, so there is that potential in the future growth projections of, of my vision of where I see us going.
Counsel, any other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Laura Roberts.
No question. Just, Charlie, thank you so much. I know how diligently you've been working on this to get the costs down. And it is greatly appreciated. So, thank you for all of your hard work on the update and all that you've been doing behind the scenes.
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman, Laura Roberts, thank you for that. Appreciate that.
I see no further questions. Uh, counsel, if anything comes up, please reach out to Charlie and, um, he can get you whatever information you might need in follow-up. Thank you, Charlie, for joining us. Okay, item seven C is, um, certainly I have it listed under finance. Counsel, uh, we have resources here in the city that are part of job descriptions and, um, performing efficiency or performing re- performance reviews. And, um, Vince and Brad are here to, um, share, uh, report they have done in reviewing our process for the AIA con- contracts. Uh, Ted Baird has also participated and, and helped as a, a resource, and he will be sharing comments tonight. Uh, we did ask for a review of the AIA, um, contract process. And, um, they are here to report on what they have found that didn't work so well and, um, what worked well and, and how we can improve this process moving forward.
Good evening. I guess it's evening now. I thought it was gonna be afternoon, but it's now into the evening, so. Um, Madam Mayor, members of council, um, we're gonna be presenting to you an overview and report on evaluations of our current process with contracts and capital projects for the city. Uh, Ted Baird, um, Brad Purser, Keith Watts, and myself were the authors of this report, and we're gonna present the findings to you here shortly. Um, Keith Watts was unfortunately not able to be here today because he's had, uh, some family, um, emergencies and some family issues. So, uh, certainly our thoughts and prayers are with him on that, so. Uh, but Ted's gonna pick up the, the slack on, on some of the things that, uh, that he was gonna, uh, that he was gonna tell council about, so. So when the city wants to do a capital project or a building of some kind, uh, we contract with design professionals and construction managers to execute the project. Um, included in your report is, um, information, um, from Discovery Park, Fire Station Six, the Public Works Administration Lab and Operations Building. We researched the, uh, AIA, which is the American Institutes of Architects, contracts and evaluated their use. Additionally, we objectively reviewed our projects and processes in order to establish our findings. Finally, we researched other cities' current processes in order to find opportunities and best practices on how to apply to our city's process improvements. Some of the key findings in the report. Not everything in this report is going to be shared with you tonight. I wanted to highlight some of those, uh, key things to you. There's nineteen pages, I'm sorry about the length of that, um, but, you know, we wanted to, I wanted to cover some of that thirty thousand foot, foot view of a very complex, uh, total process. Uh, we identified several things in this. One, there's five individual phases in a capital project that we identified as a group. Um, AIA contracts are preferred, and that's something that's in the report. What the departmental role should be. It is our view that the departmental role as a, as it, as it currently stands as a project manager. What it, what we found in doing research is, um, the, they, the, they should really stand as more of an internal customer. Um, and from right now, they have multiple hats. They're both their current role, they're an internal customer, and they're also the person that's providing input on the project. Um, the project manager role, who is it? Who should fill it? Uh, what, what does that look like? Um, we also talked about developing standard operating procedures with regards to this process, and that's in the report as well. So the five phases we identified. One is the pre-planning phase. This is the phase where we figure out what we need, what's included in the project, um, what kind of amenities we want, the site selection, where we wanna put it, how much we estimate how much it's gonna cost. The second phase is the design selection RFQ, um, phase, and that's where we, uh, select a design team and construction team. Uh, phase three is a negotiated contract. We, we looked at the AIA, uh, specific contracts. Uh, phase four, bid evaluation and price determination. And I know we've kinda been talking about that with, you know, Fire Station Six tonight, so some of these term, some of this terminology might seem familiar. Uh, and then five, price approval of the GMP. And because we were doing a process improvement project, we learned some things from our peak, um, investment that we made. And we developed a process map when we, when we looked at this. We said, what are all the steps in the process? We said, we've got five steps in it. We took a, we took a look at it and we said, here's what the process map looks like. A lot of post-it notes on this process map. Um, and you've probably, um, you've probably seen this, uh, 'cause you went through the peak training, so. Um, all of these, all of these, uh, pink post-it notes, and I apologize for using so many post-it notes, so, um, yeah, we'll, we'll see how much.
Yeah, what a waste.
I know, sorry. Yeah, it is a waste, so. Um, but there's eighty-one total steps in this five-phase process that we found. And each one of these pink post-it notes is its own action item. Um, they would be an action taken by an internal staff member or somebody that we contract out with, whether they be, um, whether they be a contract prof- or a construction professional, a design professional, our legal team, the project managers, everyone that's involved in it. And, and there's multiple, multiple facets and phases of this process, but these are, this is kinda that visual representation of, why does it take so long? Why, why is, why does this process, why is this process so complex? And so this, this is that visual representation of, of what we did as a group. So many, many of the steps that we have in here could be considered wastes. Um, we, we did find, in fact, that there were wastes, and wastes are typically identified as either waiting for something, you know, we're, we're having to go back to the beginning and redo something, like we're having to redo a design, or we're having to, um, go back and, you know, re-estimate steps. Um, and, and we ask, do these steps have value? Do they provide a good, um, good value to the city and a good value to the employees and a good value to the external customers? Um, this process allowed us to also identify, the blue post-it notes on there are the decision points. Where did we have to say yes or no? Where did we have to ask for council input? Where did we have to make a decision where we had to wait on somebody? So that, that kinda overviews that. Now, what I'm gonna do is have Ted come up here and talk to some of the key findings in the, in our report, and then he's gonna be followed up with Brad. He's gonna talk about some of the financial findings, and I'll bring it home with some of the things that we discovered from, uh, from the other cities, uh, that we interviewed, so.
Welcome, Ted. We haven't seen you for a while.
It's good to see all of you, uh, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'll be covering two slides tonight, um, focusing in on the contract negotiation process. Uh, we've identified that process as being something that could be sped up. And the main problem, the AIA contract has great acceptance in the built, local building community, a lot of municipalities use it. The terms are meaningful, they're well-known, but every party involved wants to make changes. The architect likes to make changes, the construction manager likes to make changes, the city likes to make changes. We're usually successful in making the types of changes that align the process with what's required for public bidding, uh, our insurance requirements, the limitations on indemnifications that we can give. Um, we like to fine-tune the punch list items at the end of the project to make sure that we're not into a substantial completion, uh, situation when there's still outstanding items, uh, the payment processing. So those, those are the types of changes that the city likes to make to the three agreements. The three main agreements is the agreement between the city and the architect, the city and the construction manager, and then something called the general conditions, which applies to both the architect's contracts and the construction contracts. Uh, so there are only really three agreements at, at play here. So what we're thinking, the problem is, is that we don't control that contract. We wait until the winning bidder, uh, decides to send us their, their version of the contract. And that comes to us with their requested changes. And that starts a process of us analyzing what they've changed, responding to that. Uh, a lot of times just asking to go back to the, to the initial language, because once you start messing with it, that's when problems happen. And then on top of that, response to the contractor requested changes, we have to ask for our changes. This process takes sometimes weeks. Um, and in, in fact, that was the, the primary reason for initiating this process improvement project. So the second slide is what can we do about that? And we've identified that if the city controls the contract process, we can get things off to a great start by creating, um, custom templates that include the types of things that I just went over that we usually ask for. We can also look at the contracts that we've recently negotiated, where we've ended up on changes that are requested by the architect and the construction manager. Uh, things that are reasonable and fair to all parties, that, that type of thing. Um, we think that we can, um, cut down two to three weeks, twenty-five of those eighty-one steps, that's pretty significant. But this comes with a risk. It's a, it's a, it's a little bit of a change. We don't wanna be seen as forcing terms and conditions that are un- seen as unreasonable on potential bidders. We don't want to dilute the potential pool of folks that are responding. So before we were to implement any type of custom template, we would wanna get buy-in from the, uh, building community, the architect community. Um, we can vet it with the, the contractors that we normally use. Like I said, go back to where we've ended up in our past negotiations, so that nothing's gonna be a surprise or onerous. Um, and of course, we can consult with other folks in the legal community, other municipalities. Uh, the International Municipal Law Officers Association has some suggestions for, for changes. So we've got a wide variety of sources to, to pull from. And implementing this, we're gonna get started right away so that we will be ready, uh, when the next project comes along to go to bid. So the bottom line with, with my two things is, if we take control of, of the contract process, we can cut out that two to three weeks and twenty-five steps. So I can either just stand for questions now or wait until the end. Would you have a preference, Madam Mayor?
Probably wait to the end unless, uh, council member has something pressing right now. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
I get to talk about estimation accuracy. Uh, the current process we have in place now, you saw the process map had eighty-one steps that we had all in post-it notes. Uh, the current, um, way things work is, uh, the department project manager touches us, I think seventeen of those steps. One thing Vincent alluded to ear- earlier on was, uh, you know, in addition to, you know, the role as a project manager, they're also doing their current duties that they typically have. So they have their current job, and then project manager on top of that, they manage the process. Uh, one thing we're saying is, uh, you know, we need to move towards a, uh, what, what do they call it? A, a facilities project manager, um, who would take the lead. And the department project manager would then have, be a stakeholder, uh, someone who has a seat at the table, but, um, you know, would work with the facilities project manager to work with, um, you know, the, the building community to make sure that we have what we need, um, that we're accurate. Um, the critical part of this is, it needs to happen at the, you know, during the, uh, the pre-planning phase of this. So once we have the department project manager working with the facilities, um, manager, uh, you know, as, as an internal customer, uh, we also need to work on, uh, you know, setting a, you know, what are some, some specific timelines, uh, project charters, um, you know, that way we have some structure to how we approach, um, capital projects. So not only, you know, figuring out and determining who should be on the bus and who should be driving the bus and kinda the internal dynamics that way, is kinda what we're addressing in this report, but also, you know, having some, some structure behind timelines and, and that. Um, and then some other factors that obviously impact the accuracy of, of, you know, the capital projects are, uh, you know, the availability of the subcontractors, you know, we're very busy, like, we have a very busy community, right? We just heard, you know, Scenerio Village, um, you know, some, they were busy, so we had some issues, you know, there. Um, we just heard from that. And the, and the time of the year that we get the bid, um, I'll factor into, you know, how, how accurate, um, we are on this. Um, another, and, and for example, um, finding, and this kinda goes into, you know, accuracy, uh, if you take Discovery Park. Uh, you know, that, that park has been in play for over five years. It started, I think, as a well, um, in two thousand fourteen. Um, you know, we just had a maintenance, uh, building enhancement in two thousand nineteen, so spanning five years. Um, some things have changed, uh, in, in that time, um, which obviously would affect, you know, you know, as, you know, adding a dog park or taking it off, or you know what amenities we're including in that affects the accuracy there. Um, an example of, of, of a project where everything kinda seemed to line up right was the wastewater administration, the lab expansion, and the operations remodel. Um, in that case, uh, you know, we, we had a very, a very strong, uh, project manager. Uh, we had a really strong, uh, construction manager that was involved in the process. Um, you know, there were three projects here. They, they took about a year each. Um, and, and things came in under, under budget. I, I have here nine point six million, um, versus the nine point nine million budget, so there was some savings there. Um, you know, having a, a strong team contributes to that. Um, both Discovery Park and wastewater administration, um, were under the CMA agreement, um, which means, you know, like Ted alluded to, uh, we own the relationship with all the different subcontractors as opposed to just one. Um, so, you know, part, part of that process efficiency we get is by working with, you know, one person as opposed to twenty. It cuts the workload down significantly. Um, that's, that's, um, also in the report. Um, you know, overall, uh, you know, just kinda to recap, uh, having the department manager, um, work with a facilities manager as an internal customer is our, our, kind of a primary, uh, suggestion. That we make sure we have the, the, the right people on the bus. I think that's the end of this slide. Vincent, I think you're, you're up next, bud.
Hey, Brad, as part of your recommendations, is it training the project managers to, uh, a preferred process and, and how it works best?
Well, I mean, you can, so there, there's, there's obviously options that we could take. Uh, if you have a department project manager, we can invest in them, you know, get them certified or trained as project managers so they get, you know, that additional experience, which would help. Um, you know, you could also, you know, if we have people in the biz- in the building, you know, currently that have that expertise, uh, you know, we could have them lead that process. Um, it's, you know, there are, recommended way is to go with the, the facilities project managers since they seem to have that expertise in place. And, uh, but they would still have a, a seat at the table, they would drive. These are the things that we're looking for to have. But, you know, we, I guess, the bottom line is relying on the people that have, uh, you know, that work with complex projects as their, as their, you know, their regular job, as opposed to in addition to what they're addition, what they're doing, if that makes sense.
It does.
You can invest in them, you know, it's which direction you wanna go, you know? And I don't think it'd be wrong to invest in the, you know, the project managers and giving them that expertise. Um, but you have to look at things like how much, how many of these projects do we do a year? And is it worth that investment of, of, uh, training a whole bunch of different department project managers, you know, to do a project a year type of thing? So you, it's, you know, we need to weigh the options and which direction we need to go. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Madam Mayor? Okay. Uh, Vincent, I think you're up.
So, and, and Madam Mayor, the, I think the question you got, you asked will probably be answered here in a minute from some of the research that I did from some of the other cities. There's a variety of alternatives that we could approach with that as well, so. So bringing it home here, so the cities that we engaged in doing research on, uh, best practices and what we, what we might find with what they're doing or what challenges they're having, uh, we consulted with Boise, um, with Hillsborough, Oregon, Bend, Oregon, and Salt Lake City, Utah. So we tried to get a broad, um, set of other cities that we could gain, gain insight from and, and gain information from. Um, one of the things that I'm gonna highlight first, though, is about the only apples-to-apples comparison that I is about the only apples-to-apples comparison that I could find between one project to the next happens to be part of one of our recommendations. But we compared the Boise fire station process with our process with our last fire station, Fire Station Six. They own the rights to the AIA agreement. They control what, you know, Ted was alluding to, where they control the process. It took 122 days to get from RFQ issuance to council execution or council approval, but it was 22 days faster than what our process was in that respect. So that was one, that was one that we highlighted as an example. If we're going to make this process improve, we actually have an example from another city with how it's going to work, so. One thing we discovered, although we made some, didn't have a lot of direct comparisons, all the cities we talked to acknowledged that there are problems in the pre-planning process that result in loss of time and estimation inaccuracies. And, you know, I think we've seen that with some of the projects that have been out there, that we've been off in some of our estimates. And all of them acknowledged that, you know, they are currently working on, we're all in the same boat. I guess the moral of the story is, all of the cities we interviewed are on the same boat. They all acknowledged that in the pre-planning process, where we're trying to figure out what we need for a capital project or what we need for a fire station or an admin building, there's not a really, they don't have a really established process for that. So that's one of the recommendations that we're making is to establish a project charter and better pre-planning steps. And I'll go into some of the things that we found about that here in just a second. All cities that we interviewed also utilize the departmental as a point of contact, as an internal customer, as a stakeholder, and not necessarily as a project manager. There are a few exceptions, but as Brad alluded to, they have invested in project management training for their staff. We're not necessarily making that recommendation as part of our, as part of our report. It is in there as an alternative, but that isn't the preferred recommendation because that will require significant time. And for the amount of return on investment we're going to get, we don't do these capital projects that often. So, you know, who are we going to say is going to get that project management training? So what we looked at was some of the job descriptions out there. So the facilities project managers that we have on staff right now looks like, according to the job description, that they should have some of the necessary skills to be the project manager on future projects. And so that was, that was one of the recommendations we made at this point. Some cities also utilize a third-party estimator in the pre-planning phases to better set costs, and this can be further evaluated if council desires or if the mayor desires. If expertise is not found inside the organization, most of the cities said they will contract out project management services if they have to. Because they, you know, if they don't have the, if they don't have the skills on staff, why try, why try that and, you know, increase the inefficiencies of the process? So that, I think, was what I had. Oh, and then we've got this, so back to the process map. If we, if we do some of the things we were recommending in our report, the bottom, the bottom process map represents a much cleaner and less convoluted process. It represents the steps we saved. And, you know, that process itself takes 63 steps. It's not the 25 that we found because we actually added in post-it notes. So there's a few more steps that we added in the pre-planning phases, but that's to ensure that our project gets off the ground effectively from the beginning. So, so what we have in process right now and some of our future actions. So what we have in process right now, we developed, we're in the process of developing SOPs based on our process math phases that we identified. We have the project manager roles and departmental point of contact roles that we can execute if so desired. And future actions, we'd like to pilot and trial AIA contract ownership. We'd like to gain feedback and input from the design, construction, and legal community with some of the proposed changes. And then we'd also like to create standards with the standard operating procedures so then we can audit them and say, did we achieve what we said we would like to in this standard operating process? So we can see if the process is being followed effectively and efficiently. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Vince, I would say I would add one more bullet point at the end is, as you implement these changes, that after each project you have a debrief and assess what went well and what could have been improved.
Absolutely.
And see if those can be built into the processes outlined or if there are some additional steps you can remove because they're unnecessary. But that, this way you're evaluating them as you're doing them.
Absolutely, I think that's a great suggestion.
Counsel, I know, oh, Ms. Lil Roberts.
Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say, really excited to see the PEAK training in play. It was great to see it on, you know, before and after. And even though you only came up with 18 fewer steps, time is money and 18 fewer is great, so thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm sure the, we had that in the finance conference room for a couple of months, and I'm sure they're getting annoyed with it, so I'm glad we were able to get rid of it and pull it down. But it really does highlight the skill sets we learned and how we can apply it to process improvements throughout the city. It's important to visually process map. I can tell you that that process map changed quite a bit as we did because we involved other parties, we said, hey, you know, does this look right from what you did with your, with your project or your process? And we added post-it notes, and we took post-it notes away, and we modified post-it notes, and we add a little, little curves up at the top to say, okay, no, we missed that. And so that 81 steps initially, I think, was like 60. And then we went back and we said, no, no, we missed a spot here. And so that, that final process map is a pretty good representation of what it was, but it took time to develop it and it took time to figure out we've got all these components and pieces, and then we evaluated the wastes. And those are the low-hanging fruits. The things that we've already, the things that are in this report are those low-hanging fruits. They're the things that we can execute with minimal effort, minimal impact. But there are things that we could probably do in this process, and it's in the report as well, that we can take further and we can further evaluate some of those other five phases and steps that we identified in the process, so.
And you did mention that part of your review was bringing in some architect that has gone through the process or a CM, and they shared their perspective as well?
That's, that's something we're going to do going forward. That was something that, when Keith gets back, that, and assuming we were okay with what we found out, that we'd like to engage that community so we can get input on what we're suggesting as changes and also get that, that customer feedback going forward.
One more, I guess, partner group that you could ask is a builder or developer who uses these processes themselves because they, they too have to use the AIA contract for both design and construction. And have them look at your process map and see if there's anything they see in there that is unnecessary or even discuss what their process is.
Absolutely, Madam Mayor. We, we wanted to make sure that we had our internal steps in a row first and had those clarified and, you know, in order before we wanted to get out to the external community to say, like, do we have all these identified? And yeah, there may be some additional steps that they bring in or say, you know, this, this is right on, or this is something to get feedback with, so. So I appreciate that, that comment, so.
Counsel, anything further?
No questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate the thought, the effort that has been going into this. And it kind of shows you as we look at different processes and how we can improve it, are we following our own processes and those kind of things? That there is a lengthy review of that. But this is, this is kind of, I hope, counsel, what you can appreciate in seeing that process evaluation and the various steps that goes through looking at how we can improve those various steps. So, thanks to each of you. I know you're evaluating your own work and sometimes that's probably uncomfortable, but I think the report showed truly a self-reflection on, yeah, maybe this is not the best way to do it, that we can, we can't see improvement. So that's, that's awesome. Yeah, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Just a comment maybe to chew on for later discussion is, as you've gone through this inaugural attempt at collaborating towards efficiencies and internal analysis, there's probably some debrief amongst all of you to talk about what types of analysis this group could do going forward. Are there, having gone through it, are there different types of city functions, financial or otherwise, that you think, you know what, we probably, you know, putting our heads together, we could look at these types of activities and perhaps that might provide additional value to the city going forward? If this process is going to continue, which it sounds like it certainly will if it has positive feedback like this did, and it lets us get better at what we do, I'd be curious to know, how can we use this tool, meaning your expertise collectively, in the future in other areas and something to...
Well, yeah, and I think that that is what the PEAK training has been and they're pulling together a core team that will do that. But as well, I think this effort seeks comment from counsel in saying, yeah, this process I really question. And if you want an in-depth evaluation of it, that we have those conversations. So it can be added to a list, it can be prioritized using your feedback, and we can see how we can move forward with that.
Madam Mayor, in follow-up to that, if that's, process is done in a way that's not, we're not waiting for some internal process to fail or some problem to occur, we then see that and then go try to analyze how to do it better necessarily. We might also have a chance just to regularly and routinely view different activities within our city that maybe it's as efficient as it could be, and maybe it's fine, maybe it's not, but just on an objective rotation, so to speak. I don't know what that would ever look like, but I think that's where this expertise could be really valuable.
Vince, you have to comment on the record, please. Or Dean might have your head.
He'll come after me.
We'll have to talk about process improvement there.
Sure. Well, Councilman Borton, members of council, I can tell you that, you know, the city of Boise, I also looked at some of the, you know, audit procedures that they do. And that's why establishing some of those standard operating procedures. It's hard to audit something if you don't have something in place to follow. Can't say, hey, did we do this right? No, we didn't, we don't know if we did it right because we don't have a standard process in place. So absolutely, I think, I think that's an outcome that we can, we can speak to once some of these, there's plenty of established processes that we could audit. And that's what, you know, the city of Boise does with their, you know, auditor role. But I think there's plenty of, there's plenty of those opportunities available for us to take a look at and to evaluate down the road. And there could be, you know, there could be those things, you know, as a group or as a collection, as we learn these process improvement techniques and we do continuous improvement, to say, could we make this process better? Or to your point, is this process already good? And are we executing it effectively every single time? Yeah, absolutely, we're all for it.
Well, and I know Vince, you have been talking to those that have been kind of training as the PEAK trainers. As you have identified, some of those processes you're looking to evaluate as you're listing those, it would be helpful, I think, to bring those to council and so they have some opportunity for input.
Absolutely, we can do that.
Anything further? Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item 7D, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Borton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We are, we'll be real quick, this is just a few minutes planting a seed for maybe future discussion. And if you saw in the agenda manager, there was a brief description that kind of told you exactly what we're talking about. There are, on occasion, multiple public hearings that all get stacked up and we have no flexibility in some circumstances to spread them out. The code provision that's cited in the agenda is the one that we've had for a long time which requires basically 45 days max from P&amp;Z to us. And using next Tuesday as an example, where there's six public hearings, we're structurally set to invite poor decision-making process. If, and the clerk has no flexibility to spread those out. So Tuesday will be, or the 18th will probably end on the 19th. And so one of the options which we can consider, if you want to be open to it, is just a simple amendment of that code provision and expand 45 days to something like 60 or 75, which could allow, okay, chopping it up. So, and it benefits, I think, the reason it's worth the discussion, I think it benefits everybody, including the development community and the public. Nobody wants to be here win or lose at 3:30 in the morning. So it seems like a week or two expansion affords the flexibility for better decision-making. Happier public, happier everybody, so. If you get a thumbs up, we'll prepare a draft, which is relatively easy. It's just changing the date and we can bring it back at one of the January meetings, so.
Mr. President?
Mr. Burton.
Also, a comment, I don't believe we're trying to prolong this process. So if there are applications that need to be expedited, we're not saying you have to wait 45 days, you know. Is there, is there, is there a way that we could make it go from 30 no longer than 75 just so that we can accommodate those who might need quicker attention?
Mr. Burton, I don't think there's anything, there's no rule which precludes us from going quick. I think it's a matter of staff ability to get the work done early and completely. Really, and there's just so much of it, so.
Madam Mayor, if I may interject there as well, like Councilmember Burton, the only thing that prevents us from going faster, if you will, is the noticing requirements and timelines. We can only go as fast as those will allow us to go.
I think maybe some of the extra point to that is, next week is a great example of that. And someone's saying, does, is that fair not just to staff or to you all? It's to the public that comes and has to wait till their thing, and it may be 10 o'clock before their item comes up on the agenda. And how many of our citizens have we lost by then? So that's, that's part of it as well.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Neri.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I wanted to add one thing. This is a UDC code amendment, so it has to go through planning and zoning first. So we'll begin the process with the planning department and it has to go through them, so it'll be a little bit before it gets back to you.
Madam Mayor, if I can just piggyback on that comment a little bit. So Bill Parsons is actually putting, I almost said finishing touches. He's probably got a little bit more work than that, but about ready to share the next round of UDC changes with UDC Work Group. So they've met a couple of times and then we're going to electronically kind of share the next version. This isn't on their radar, it isn't something we, but I don't know how much of a, how much they're going to care, especially if we can explain it that way. Holidays and those types of things, where you have a workshop and a holiday and perfect storm type of things, we're not trying to delay anybody. Anyways, my point is we've got folks that are in the development community on that work group that we can vet this through and add this to that and not have to do a specific hearing notice for just this change. It can go as part of a larger group, or not, just letting you know there's that opportunity to piggyback this with that process or we can process it independently. It's going to be about on the same timeline, though. So just wanted, some direction there, if you want us to add that to this, we can, we can do that, or again, process it separately.
Thank you, Caleb. Anything else on that? Mr. Borton?
Madam Mayor, if there's no preference, if it doesn't cause additional delay to piggyback on the existing process, then might as well vet it all as one, but...
The timing seems right, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's good. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, 7E, it's, it's council discussion, shall we start with Ms. Little Roberts?
Madam Mayor, I wish I had some good news, but Air Quality Board is still struggling. Software has not progressed any since, since the last two times, I believe, I have reported and there is, in order to go ahead and have a meeting in December, they have moved it to next Monday at 9:30 a.m. So hopefully, something will come out of that meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Burton?
Madam Mayor, I'm still with the same report, the alternate to many of your spots which you, you attend, so, Alhambah House, Compass, Emergency Management, EMS, JPA, are updates that are in your court or me, so.
Pass.
Pass.
Madam Mayor.
Getting Mr. Palmer's.
Store Preservation Commission is still there, Josh wasn't at the meeting, so it was less exciting than A can be, nothing really to report.
You heard from Kendall with MADC and so she gave you a brief overview of the legislative outreach and the documentary that they had done. I guess just, the chamber will be holding a legislative preview coffee on the 19th here at City Hall, Compass will meet jointly next week with BRT and they will consider the communities in motion and so have some, I'll have a greater update in January on that. MDC meets tomorrow and we'll get an audit update, it looks like a clean audit and they are trying to continue to get some movement from Union Pacific on the lease that they are working to secure on the parking lot across the street. Harvest Transit had 626 rights in October, we'll get an update from BRT next week. AIC Legislative Committee meeting went on last Friday and they discussed some of the legislative positions that they're looking at and considering and taking feedback from the cities, they'll have another meeting in January to confirm those. Treasure Valley Partnership met at the Idaho College of Osteopathic Medicine yesterday, or Monday, yesterday, and was able to meet with the board, their Board of Directors and get a tour and an update on some of their activities and as well had a update from West Ada School District on some legislation that they're considering and talking with our area legislators about and seeing if it's viable to bring it to the legislature, not this year, but next year. MIAC had their holiday party last night in Conference Room AMB and that was, that was very wild and very active, lots of energy and they will be focusing on their participatory budgeting proposals as they reported last week and their presentations that you all have been invited to, to come and view and also talking to our legislators about their proposal on lowering the voting age to 17.
Brilliant.
The ACCEM, our Ada County Emergency Management Regional Group, met yesterday and approved grant request for our law enforcement and fire and getting medical response kits and body armor for the rescue task force. The only request they didn't approve was that from the City of Starr or from the Starr Fire Department because they are not a member.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, and, yes.
Oh, sorry, I had a question, I just had a question regarding, for the MIAC, the legislation for the voting, is it, so they can vote in the primaries if they're 17, if they're going to be 18 by...
The general election.
The general election. So it goes by a specific date, not just if they're going to be 18 that year or within a year, they have to be 18 before the November election, right?
Yes, they haven't completely written it, once they do, I'll bring it to you.
That's the wording that's going to be probably the hardest to figure out.
Exactly. As they pointed out last week, other states have passed similar legislation and they're trying to incorporate what some of the other states have done and some of the pros and cons to that and they're hoping to have it.
And there's no exact date, so the date changes every year, which is probably makes...
I don't know, I haven't seen it, so that's just what they're passionate about right now.
I think it's great, I think it's a great idea.
And just lastly, before I turn this over to Mr. Burton, we do have dates set for the joint meetings with West Ada School District, just to remind you, it's January 30th, which is a Wednesday, and February 21st with Ada County Highway District, which is a Thursday. Mr. Burton? Oh, and we will be, if there's any agenda items specifically you would like to see, if you can submit that to CJ and then we'll, we'll get a draft agenda out to each of you. Caleb's already weighed in, we do have a couple of items already on the joint meeting for the school district, including an update on the school safety activities. Mr. Burton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's really refreshing to know that you really don't have very much on your plate.
Thank you.
I don't have that much to add, I was, you covered Compass and so the only other thing that I am involved with other than liaison responsibilities is the Golf Course Committee and Ms. Little Roberts and I attended that meeting a week or two ago and things look fairly, not, not a lot of new updates to talk about, I mean, I think things are coming along, he has a lot of plans and, you know, I think he's done a fairly good job out there, so I think that he might come before us fairly soon and he's, I don't remember exactly what the date was and wasn't it like beginning of the year or, I don't remember, but I know that he'll be maybe coming before us, before maybe first quarter next year?
Yeah. Madam Mayor, Eric plans on coming forward with his capital improvement plan, he did pay his bill on time this year because he didn't present a plan and get it pre-approved and then, and then accomplish it, but he does plan on doing it for 2019.
Same thing, golf tees, tee boxes and stuff.
Tee boxes.
Right.
Batteries.
That's it.
Sorry.
I stand for questions.
Complant Committee, tomorrow?
Yes, tomorrow night, I forgot about that, thank you for that reminder, I am buying pizza for the Complant Steering Committee, I will be there and they'll know that I'm present and it will...
Is it a smell?
I'll try to change the perception that we don't listen and that we truly do care and hopefully they'll, I spoke with Ms. LaFever this morning about it as well, I don't know if she 100% believe, you know, believes that I will be there tomorrow night, but I ensured, she did order pepperoni and so we'll see how, we'll see how it goes.
Well, we'll see how well you listen and whether they have pepperoni pizza there or not.
I think, I think pizza's going to help, don't you think?
For the record.
Feed them and they will come.
I think so.
There you go.
Think so.
Ms. Mylum?
Okay, so you all have these in your station, new activity guide that just went out today or within the last couple of days for winter, spring, and then this is the annual Parks and Rec Annual Report, there's a lot of very proud information in there and this is hot off the press today, you can read those, and I have a huge update on the successes of Christmas in Meridian.
Awesome.
Santa's mailbox went up on November 21st, we've already received more than 800 letters, last year our volunteers responded to 1,100 letters, we expect to surpass that number this year, the mailbox comes down six days from now. The Winter Lights Parade and Christmas Tree Lighting were a huge success, our 42-foot blue spruce is covered with 57,000 LED lights, that's more than three miles of light strands.
It is.
This year's parade had just over 50 entries and a second stunt Santa to keep the program moving along. The Meridian Twilight Christmas Market operated at full capacity, was coordinated by staff of...
Pop Genesis.
What the hell? Did I accidentally call Sari on my phone? The girl, these gals who manage our weekly Saturday market here at City Hall. The Children's Winterland Festival took place at Meridian Boys and Girls Club last Saturday, attendees donated nearly 800 pounds, 800 pounds of food and $300 in cash for the Meridian Food Bank, Channel 6 Television covered the event, which was extremely well-attended. Sunday was the final night for people to vote for their favorite entry in the Downtown Meridian Christmas Decorating Contest, the winners will be announced this week, probably Councilmember Burton, but, you know, I'm just making that up, that's not official news, I have no idea. The Parks and Rec Department once again raised money for charity through its holiday classic volleyball tournament, staff used tournament proceeds to purchase $2,600 worth of Christmas gifts for 68 low-income preschoolers who participate in Meridian's Head Start Program. And the Salvation Army Angel Tree, which is out in the front lobby, has generated dozens of toy donations, including a bicycle, which Steve Sitaway will personally deliver to the agency later this week. So they've re, they put new tags on three times as they've all been taken, there are still some available, and then they go to the Salvation Army and they put together a little store for families to come and shop. And I think that's it, so if anybody wants to get anything, now's your chance. Buy some gifts, grab a tag. Or five.
Thank you, great update.
Shelley helped with that. Got to give Shelley credit.
And you did say three miles of Christmas...
Three miles of strands.
And 57,000 lights?
57,000 LED lights, yeah, and I would like to publicly give kudos to Renee for getting that band on our float because I think it was the most, it was the best time I've had since I've been elected and any parade hands down.
Although I'm already challenging the council next year to have elf outfits.
Oh, they don't want us playing the instruments?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer?
Hard pass. Hard pass.
But you're not on there anyway, you've already passed to begin with. Gosh, where is your spirit?
Oh, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I don't know if this number is exactly accurate, but it's, was it, yeah, I think Friday or yesterday, let me know what day it is, I think yesterday was the close for registration for winter sports for our teams and it was like, yesterday alone, which was the last day, brought in like $34,000 of registrations, like that.
Wow.
Yeah. Hot stuff going on at floor two.
I think there's, every department has a lot going on and every department has participated in that, that spirit of giving and we, we think our employees, they've really shown that, that community giving back and it's, it's been fun to see and I will, I'm, you'll be getting a column about that here soon. On a last note in, in this update, I did want to let all of you know that Mayor Corey died yesterday and we, we are working with the family, we are rescheduling the dedication of Conference Room A and B and naming it in his honor to coincide with his memorial service and so the family will get back to me on, on when that might be. So when we find out, we'll, we'll certainly let you know and if you would, please keep his family in, in your prayers. Jerry told me earlier today that on Saturday they would have been celebrating their 61st wedding anniversary and so they've, they've had a long life together and certainly Mayor Corey had served, he loves this community without a doubt, so I'll, I'll get you information as we get it. I do have a picture of what the plaque will look like and I'll, I'll pass that around and, and if you have any comments, please follow up with me, so. Okay, if there isn't anything further, item 8A is Ordinance 18-1798 and I will ask our city clerk to please read this by title.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Meridian Ordinance Number 18-1798, an ordinance file H2018-0088 West Bridge Subdivision for annexation of a parcel of land located in the southwest quarter of the northeast Quarter of Section 28, Township 4 North, Range 1 West. Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, as described in Attachment A and annexing certain lands and territories situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the City of Meridian as requested by the City of Meridian, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of 12.84 acres of land from RUT to R4 Medium Low Density Residential Zoning District in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law and providing for a summary of the ordinance and providing for a waiver of the reading rules and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Counsel, do you have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum?
I move that we approve Ordinance Number 18-1798, suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve item 8A, Mr. Clerk, will you please call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
All ayes. Item 8B is Ordinance 18-1799, Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Meridian Ordinance Number 18-1799, an ordinance file H2018-0018 Cherry Blossom Subdivision for the rezone of a parcel of land being all lot, all of lots 6 and 7 of Block 2 JL Town Subdivision as filed in Book 15 of Platts at pages 982 and 983, records of Ada County, Idaho, and a portion of the northeast quarter of Section 12, Township 3 North, Range 1 West, Boise, Meridian, City of Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification from R4 Medium Low Density Residential Zoning District to R8 Medium High Density Residential Zoning District in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law and providing for a summary of the ordinance and providing for a waiver of the reading rules and providing an effective date.
Counsel, you've heard this read by title, do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum?
I move we approve Ordinance Number 18-1799 with suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve item 8B, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
All ayes. Counsel, any items under item nine?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum?
I just thought I would send another quick reminder for everybody to change their passwords while they're sitting here at the computer before they get locked out.
That's right.
Yeah.
And to do your ICrimp training, if you haven't done that already?
Done.
All right, good job.
Seriously, you did, didn't you?
Hey, if there's nothing further, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So I moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.